The best father to them.
Brother's daughter married a high school teacher. Gated in Washington State School. He is the vice president.
Good morning and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of August 13th, 2015. The record shows all the commissioners are present as well as staff. And I would like for you to join me now with a salute to the flag.
I present the dance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Got too much stuff here. Thank you very much. Next was we have our public comment period. If there is someone in attendance today that would like to address the Planning Commission on an issue land use related that is not on our agenda, now would be your opportunity.
Madam Chair, before we get to that, you skipped over agenda changes.
I did skip over that.
We did have one change.
Okay.
Item two D, the minutes from July 30th were completed in time to get to your packet. And the meetings have been pretty long. We want to make sure you had enough time to review them. So those aren't on the agenda today. So we'll trail those to next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Sorry for skipping over you there, Peter. So again, the public comment period on items not on our agenda today?
Good morning. I'm Tanya Dawson from Valley Springs, and I just wanted to make some comments on the general process. The past town hall meetings seemed to be a prominent discussion point surrounding the general plan. And I wanted to, I attended some of the town hall meetings. Specifically, the first one was in San Andreas. And it was pretty interesting. There were a lot of tables set out and people were divided into groups and to go to each table. And my table, there's only about four of us there. And the rest of the table seemed pretty full. And I seemed to get into a group, fortunately, that we all valued property rights and that was a high priority for us. And it seemed that each of the other groups seemed to have somebody there from either the Calaveras Planning Coalition, MyValleySprings.com, or Fertile Conservancy. And our table didn't. We were just all property rights, interested in property rights. But a gentleman came asked to join our group. I didn't know who he was at the time. And we had room at the table, so I said, you know, sure, come on and join us. And turns out, he kept pushing for alternative B. And none of us were interested in, you know, we had alternative A, B, and C they gave us to choose from. And none of us were interested in any of those alternatives. They didn't have any values that we cared for in them at all. And we were wanting to do our own alternative. And this gentleman kept trying to push us and working on each one of us to go toward B, or at least one of the others to try to compromise. And even, I think his name, Larry Mittner and Brenda Gilardi came over, tried to pressure us to choose one of their alternatives. And Larry Mittner came over and was very frustrated that we wouldn't comply and choose one of their alternatives. We ended up on the spot there making alternative D. And at the end, we were all invited, each table was invited to have our picture taken. And I kept inviting this gentleman to have his picture taken with us. And I couldn't understand why he wouldn't do it. And finally, in the picture, you could see him kind of hiding behind me here, you know, where you couldn't really see his face in our picture with alternative D. And maybe he didn't want to have any association with it or something, but now I would understand why. So, so I just thought that was something that was important. Also, I went to, oh, my ex-husband.
Who was it?
Oh, it's Tom Infascino. So, and my ex-husband was at another table. And he was trying to advocate for property rights. And he wasn't interested in the A, B, or C that they gave us to choose from. And he was ridiculed and made fun of and shot down. And basically, he felt silenced. And also, another friend of mine who's not here today, she also said the same thing, that she felt forced into choosing alternative B and that she didn't feel like she really had any say in what was being chosen. So that is just my perspective on those community town hall, you know, workshop meetings. So.
I have a question or two from Ms. Dawson on this. I'm allowed to ask questions?
Well, we're not, it's not on the agenda, this discussion about town hall meetings. If we wanted to put it on the agenda, we could.
I'd be happy to answer questions. I'm not opposed to answering questions on it.
It's probably, if, it's probably not appropriate to ask questions.
Is it probably or for a fact, Chris?
Pardon me?
Is it a probably or is it a fact?
I'm going to, is, is Council, let me just say, I am going to recommend that we not engage in a discussion because that would be engaging in the conduction of business of something that's not on the agenda. So public comment is certainly welcome, but if this is something the Planning Commission wants to direct staff to put on an agenda, then it would be properly agendized and it could be discussed in a more interactive fashion.
Although if there's more information you would like, I'd be happy to.
And if the Commission chooses to engage in this kind of conversation, I think we should put it on the agenda and that would be the appropriate time to do that. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Elaine St. John, and I'm a resident of Calaveras County. I live in Copperopolis. I'm a real estate agent. And I was speaking with a number of real estate agents the other day. We were talking about the Board of Supervisor meetings and also some of the Planning Commission meetings. And somebody had told me that they have heard that there are people that get up and speak that don't live in Calaveras County. And as a resident, I think it's really important for everyone to know the people in the gallery and also yourselves, whether or not the person that's speaking lives here. The other thing I heard too is that some people are paid to be here. Whether or not that's true, that they're paid to, you know, be at every meeting, I think that's also important too, because that puts a whole different weight and a different slant on things. So, I live in Calaveras County and I wasn't paid to be here. Thank you very much. I hope you take this under consideration.
Thank you. I want to just send this to the, that's from the workshop document. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public comment period and move on to the consent.
I think there's one or two more.
My name is Al Segala, Taxpayer Association. And I've been to many of the, many of the workshops and town hall meetings. And there is an agenda going on. It's, some people call it a progressive agenda. There's other names for it. And basically, it's oriented toward moving the control of private property from the property owner to the collective or the group or government. And so this seems to be the struggle that we're going through now. This Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors seems to be more sensitive to property rights than former officials were. And so, one of the things that's claimed is that the proposed general plan, it's the results from the workshop represent what the people want. This is reflection what people want. And when I look back over the ones I attended, afterwards, I realize it was directed, very highly directed. The outcome was directed in advance. And it's enjoyable to sit in the group with crayons and be able to color what other people can do with their property and how good it would be if we could keep it rural or do this or do that. But when we start thinking about what our government and our country is about, it's not about centralized planning. It's about government respecting individual rights. And when government does do this, you may not have a perfect plan like you could have in the Soviet Union or Nazi Germany. And I'm not even sure their plans are perfect anyway because they're both bit the dust. I think that if we can emerge through this process with a, not just a recognition of our constitution, but to, in each element, in each part, ensure that the property rights are protected. One of the areas that is concerned is when we talk about having open space. Open space is great. If I had a crayon, I could write open space on other people's property. It's such a nice idea. But when we start thinking about, we're talking about other people's property, we have to think, is that what they want for their property? Sometimes it is. Sometimes it's okay. Sometimes these things can be negotiated. But the most important thing is when you take a person's right to use their property away, according to our constitution, you're, that's a taking. The constitution requires you compensate those people for the loss of their property or the use of their property. So if we bear this in mind as we move through this process, I think we will emerge, we're already in the right direction. I think we'll emerge with something that not only be workable, but our kids and their kids and their kids can live in a free society. And that really is a good idea.
Thank you.
Good morning. Colleen Platt with My Valley Springs and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Just wanted to respond to a couple of comments just made. People are allowed to comment at the Board of Supervisors and Planning Commission, whether they're from this county or not. There have been commissioners and supervisors from other counties that have come here to comment. There's nothing unusual in that. People have jobs in this county that live in other counties. There's nothing wrong with that. People are paid to be here. There's attorneys in this room that are paid to be here. There's nothing wrong with that. This is a free country. Everybody can come up and speak. There's agendas on many sides and we all know that. There's nothing wrong with that. People come up and they advocate for what they believe in. That's our duty as citizens. Also, people come from other communities in Calaveras County and comment on other communities in Calaveras County. That's also a tradition in Calaveras. And there's nothing wrong with that. And I don't think it's fair to criticize anybody for doing any of these things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peter Race, Jenny Lynn. As long as we can criticize previous speakers, let's get something straight. Some people, it's not free. You and I, we pay taxes like road taxes to Caltrans. And when they hire folks to speak of their program, like My Valley Springs did, it's good to know where they're coming from, who's paying for it, to one end. There was a lot of committee meetings and et cetera by groups concerning general plan. And one of the first one I remember, maybe some of you other people remember, there was a survey was sent out to all the, well, in my area anyway, I don't know, for the whole county. What was their priority that they wanted to see changed? Somebody spent a lot of money. And I don't think it's exactly came out of local pockets other than road tax. Did you folks ever seen the result of the survey? Did anybody looked at the survey? Was any, why it wasn't present, that survey? What people looked that was important in this county? And I really appreciate all these good folks from all different counties all around us and all these nice stakeholders, nonprofit stakeholders, contributing to the economy of this county. And I don't see a nonprofit stakeholders putting money into this county. At least it's not coming out of our pocket. It's coming out of some bigger organizations, sometime from overseas. It's very nice that they care about us and I really appreciate it. But far as I'm concerned, what they've been spewing and trying to sell, I don't want it to be descriptive, but they can stick at some place where the sun don't shine. They're not speaking my behalf. No, maybe they're speaking behalf of those people who got hired out to promote those ideology. In this county, the board's been changed. We had supervisors in here who spoke for 45 minutes, how much they liked this or that, how much they supported D and et cetera. But at the end, they made a compromise. They had a compromise of A and B, whatever. The bottom line is, he's not with us anymore. People spoken. Certain ideology was promoted in the fifth district last election. They lost their rear for a good reason. People didn't like the ideology that was promoted. So it's unfortunate. We do have difference of an opinion. And but, folks, sooner or later, you folks have to answer the citizens, the voting citizens in this county. And until you're going to give driver's license to the smelt and make them allowed to vote, it's still going to be us residents who are going to make the decision. And we are friendly, respectful way, but it's going to be us to make the decision. And I think most of us are adult enough to know what we like and what we don't like. And I'm sure there's some folks who can present it more eloquently than I can. But I don't want any page stooges coming in here and telling me how I should live my life, what I should do with my property. If they want to do it, they're more than welcome to show utopia at their own expense, on their own land, and show what great it would be. But we do have intelligent folks. As far as those meeting goes, we have residents in a fifth district who used to work for Rent Corporation, the one who wrote the Delphi Technique. And they could be seen, he doesn't want to hear this, does he? And I, we got to the APA.
Mr. Race, you have about a minute left?
Has it been five minutes?
It's been four.
Four? Oh, hey, good.
That's fine. I'm just giving you a one minute. You got one minute left.
Thank you very much. It's very kind of you, man. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome.
The American Planning Association, maybe they didn't take the boot camp, what they offer, how to handle Agenda 21. Maybe they didn't go to the boot camp, how to handle the Delphi Techniques in meetings. But some people should have taken that because they sure make an idiot out of themselves, creating fear and panic in everybody else. I don't want to take any more of the time. I mean, I could keep going for hours, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Joyce Teckel. I'm president of MyValleySprings.com. And I can't think of an incident where Caltrans gave $250,000 to a small grassroots 501(c)(3). Thank you.
Fifty thousand.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Bonnie Newman. I live on Double Springs. And I pay taxes on three parcels. I want to talk about property rights. I have the right to live in peace and safety with full health. And I would fight if somebody came on Double Springs and tried to jeopardize my health and safety. As far as property rights go, we don't have the right to destroy anything. We have the responsibility to steward our property into the future. I'm aware on Double Springs because I find artifacts from Indians or maybe before the Indians, stone artifacts, that tell me many, many people walked on my property. I'm not the first one to come and get a dozer to come and level my ground. I'm not the, I know that there was three hotels erected on my property 150 years ago. They all burned down. As a resident, and that's where I'm coming from, because I'm not a property, I'm not a business owner and I'm not a page stooge from anywhere. I'm a free stooge. A stooge that pays taxes every year on three pieces of property that I've invested my entire life into. I plan to die in Calaveras County. I just hope it's not any sooner than I plan to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Janice Bassett from Valley Springs. I'm bringing almost 200 letters that we collected over the weekend, and I would like to read that letter to you. Dear county officials, I object to the proposed asphalt plant at the Hogan Dam Quarry for the following reasons.
Ms. Bassett, would you prefer to wait until we have the public comment period on the asphalt plant?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
I just got here and I thought you were already talking about it.
No, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, sorry.
Not a problem. We look forward to hearing from you soon.
Broadcastist, Lorette Lane in Valley Springs. I want to say two things. One, I welcome our friends from Copperopolis who come to testify here. I would also welcome someone from Clements who wanted to testify here, which is probably geographically closer than Copperopolis. But I love hearing people from other areas testify, for instance, that they'd be happy with a certain something in their neighborhood when actually it's going to be in our neighborhood. They have their right to express that. Secondly, on the issue of property rights, I want to just point out that what Al said seems to be saying property rights are sacred and inviolate. And in reality, it's much more of a balancing act. And it's a little bit akin to free speech, where we've got free speech in this country, but there are limits. You can't yell fire in a crowded theater. Everyone knows that. In terms of property rights, Supreme Court has ruled numerous times that someone's property rights are affected by the property rights of a neighbor. And a good example of this is noise ordinances. Al might want to have the loudest hootenanny in the county on his property. And that's great. But if the person next door says, that's too loud for me, and they go get a decibel counter and they count it and it does exceed the number of decibels allowed, then Al's got to turn it down. And he might say, I got the right to have the loudest hootenanny I want, but now that his neighbors also have rights to say, it can't be too loud. And so it's always a balancing act. It's never that someone has all the rights and nobody else has any. In some instances, people may have purchased property where they could have the loudest hootenanny in the county, because there were no neighbors. Maybe it was all grazing land across from them. And then 10, 20 years later, somebody puts in a neighborhood there. Well, now that person who was just dealing with grazing land has to deal with a residential neighborhood. And their rights are likely going to change because the people who moved in there and are raising kids there also have rights that were essentially granted to them by the county when the county allowed someone to divide the land and sell parcels. So property rights are never all or nothing. They're always a balancing act. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Vicki Renke, I just had to get up because it's sitting in these meetings and it's very frustrating because we think we can only do things because the government tells us what we can and can't do. What about just good human kindness to your neighbors? That's how I look at life. Why would I do that to my neighbor? Because I want to be a good neighbor. So this is, I just needed to say that. So maybe people have good common sense to do the things that we need to do and we don't need government rules to tell us that our noise is too loud. So anyway, I just had to get up to make that comment. And it goes on, obviously, to everything we do in our society. Let's just be good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so we'll close the public comment period and we're moving on to the consent agenda, which is now the approval of the minutes from July 23rd, 2015 Planning Commission meeting and the revised Planning Commission Resolution 2015-011 for Life Content to Plaza LLC and Jay's Not Here Inc. Are there any provisions, corrections? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's been moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Our next item of business is a public hearing, 2015-031 Brett Hart Union High School District, Pre-Aquisition Review and General Plan Consistency Finding. And I will turn it over to Peter.
Thank you. Peter Mauer, Planning Director. State law has two requirements that when a public agency, well, there's one, one when any public agency requires land, that it needs to be reviewed by the Planning Commission to find it's consistent with the general plan. In addition, for public schools, the Public Resources Code requires that analysis be done to determine the appropriateness of that, including consistency with the general plan. So we've combined these two review processes into a single review by the Commission. The school district hired a consultant to prepare a review of the various items that need to be looked at. Consultant has prepared a staff report, or a report that was included in your packet, found that the site didn't have any constraints that would preclude it from being appropriately used as a school. Also, reviewed our general plan policies to determine if there was anything that might create an inconsistency, found none. I then reviewed that report and concurred with it that the expansion of the Brett Hart High School onto that piece of property would be appropriate, would be consistent with our general plan, particularly as it relates to being identified within the sphere of influence of the city of Angels Camp and that the city would most likely provide the services necessary, public water and sewer, the roads impacted would be primarily within the city. So we are recommending that you find that it's consistent and recommend approval or not really approval, just certainly recommending that it is appropriate for the school to move forward on this. We have prepared a category of exemption or, yeah, a notice of exemption under SEQA. There is a provision, statutory provision, that allows for future studies where there is no commitment by the agency taking action to be exempt from SEQA. And we have found that this applies. In addition to that, there is, we're required to sort of look at, well, are there environmental effects associated with it to make sure that it fits that exemption? And under the analysis that was done, we didn't find that there were any significant impacts associated with that. So we feel that that exemption is appropriate. So with that, I've turned over to the school district or school district representative to see if they have any further comments.
So are there any questions of Peter right now by the Commission? Okay.
Are you saying that the school district wants to, is contemplating the use of this land or they're?
They are contemplating acquiring that land. The specific purpose is to use it for expansion of their agricultural education program and be used primarily for raising of livestock. I think they plan to maybe put a barn in. And before they can do that, it needs to be reviewed by the Planning Commission for consistency with the general plan and appropriateness of the site.
And the land is not within the city limits?
No, it's within the county.
Certainly within the sphere.
It's within the sphere.
Okay, so the obligation. Okay, so the obligation on the part of the county going forward is nominal or nonexistent because City of Angels is going to take care of it?
Well, even if the city chose not to annex the property, further action to develop the school is exempt from local regulation.
From?
From local regulation. So once we make the finding that's consistent with the general plan, the school district becomes the lead agency for any action associated with the construction of school facilities. If it's annexed, then the city would be the lead agency, or Laughco, working with the city, would be the lead agency on any environmental review associated with annexation.
So with that, I'd like to ask the applicant or applicant's agent from the school district if you'd like to address the commission.
Good morning. My name is Michael Chiumini. I'm the superintendent of Bret Hart Union High School District. Do you folks have any questions?
Does the school district have an agricultural plot now?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. But we're outgrowing it, and actually, we had, we've expanded to raise sheep, and the place where our sheep were being raised was away from our campus, so our students really didn't have an active part in that process of learning about that part of agriculture. So when this opportunity came about, it was, it was a good opportunity. Our campus is landlocked, and so it was a good opportunity to expand our program, to provide an additional opportunity for our students.
Thank you.
Am I supposed to sign my name on this?
Yes, please do. Any other questions of Mr. Giannetti right now? No? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We may have more later. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak regarding this project?
Amy Augustine, Augustine Planning Associates. I'm representing Bret Hart Union High School District. Just wanted one clarification. The school does become the SEQA lead agency once they actually take title to the property. However, any off-site improvements, those would still be subject to city regulation, county regulation, whoever's jurisdiction they might fall in. And Mr. Hanam from the City of Angels Camp is here, in case you had any questions of city processes. And if you have any questions regarding the acquisition report, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? No, I don't think so. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so I think we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Planning Commission for discussion, deliberation, action.
Just in support of these efforts, that's, when I was in high school, I took ag class and was in FFA, and, so I know how the process works. It's very important that the school have nearby plots that they, that the ag teachers can, can use to teach these concepts. In our situation, when I was in school, there were some, a little bit of variation where the, the herd of sheep that the chapter, FFA chapter, had would move around from one student to the next year by year. And I was, I had it for a year. So you get the herd of sheep, you're responsible for taking care of it, and you're responsible for passing on to the next guy the same number of ewes in the following year. So it's a great program for the, for the student who couldn't otherwise acquire the livestock. He ends up with a herd of sheep at the, at the end of the year, and somebody else gets, you know, gets it to use it the next year. So it's a great program. Anything that you're doing in that regard, you find my support.
Are we ready for the recommendation? Okay, Peter, would you like to?
So I recommend that you adopt Resolution Number 2015-018, finding that the proposed acquisition of approximately 7.7 acres of land by the Bret Hart Union High School District for expansion of its agricultural education program is consistent with the county general plan, and the site is appropriate for use as a school.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, and good luck.
Can I ask what happened to item three?
I know, I was wondering the same thing.
Did it get pulled? I didn't hear it get pulled.
Is that the, which item?
That was the revised.
Revised.
That was on your consent calendar, and it was approved. That was on the consent calendar, and it wasn't pulled, so when you moved to approve the consent calendar.
Oh, okay. In both.
Yeah. Thank you.
That's why I read it, just to make sure people were clear. We'll just give you a minute, Peter. Determination pursuant to Calaveras County Code Section 17-42-035. That's a proposed asphalt plant at Hogan Quarry will involve the use of hazardous material that may have a significant effect on the environment. And to Planning Directors Determination that the Environmental Management Agency's Determination triggers a requirement for a conditional use permit. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Mauer.
Thank you. Well, as you stated, this is a appeal. The original appeal was in two parts. Subsequently, the appellant just sort of combined that into a single argument that the action by the planning director in response to the health officer was really sort of routine, and it's, while it was part of the appeal, the focus of the discussion, the appeal, is really on the action by the health officer. So with that, a little bit of background, I think everyone's pretty familiar with the asphalt plant at this point in time. The, this component of the appeal is the application of a section of the code, 1742.035, that requires review by the county health officer for any industrial use, any change of use, a business license, or building permit. So when a, when one of these things occurs, and we found that the submittal of the application for an authority construct for the asphalt plant was a change of use, that they must submit a plan or a list of substances to be used in the process to the health officer. The health officer is then required to review that list or plan and make a determination whether there may be a significant effect on the environment. If there is, then he has to report to me, and a conditional use permit is required. So that is where we're at right now. The application, applicant submitted an application on May 18th. It was resubmitted in June after additional information was provided. And on July 2nd, the health officer determined that the type and quantity may have a significant effect. I then notified the applicant on that same day, the conditional use permit is going to be required, and they filed an appeal, which brings us here today. There are three main points of the appeal, and I'm sure the applicant's representatives will go over those in much more detail, but to sort of summarize that.
I'm sorry, but could you back up one slide?
Certainly.
Could you look at bullet, the 7-2 entry, the first 7-2 entry?
Uh huh.
Did you mean to say that the health officer determined the type, method of use, and quantity may have significant effect? Or did you, did you affirmatively delete that one portion?
I'm sort of summarizing on these, so yes, the, the code requires the type, method of use, and quantity required.
Just want to make sure that that was just an error of omission.
Other than writing up the whole code, I just sort of bullet points, so. So the first point of the appeal is that the health officer misapplied the, the standards. That also, that the legislative history provides criteria to apply to the code section, and that the proposed asphalt plant satisfies that criteria. There will be a number of decisions that you will need to sort of consider as you go through this process, and we'll sort of provide a decision tree so at the end of the hearing, so you sort of know all the various steps we need to go through as we consider the course of action on this appeal. The first one, the first couple of them are sort of routine, I think we've sort of consented, yeah, these are, these are issues. And the first is that the addition of an asphalt plant is a change of use, and then would trigger this section. I think we can all agree that, yes, there is a change of use by adding an asphalt plant to the quarry. The second one was that, you know, did they submit the required information that the code provides, or code requires? And yes, they did. I think, you know, we can all agree to that. And then the third one that I think we can all agree to is that the language of section of 035 is not clear. There, there's, you know, it doesn't provide a very clean process where it's very clear that every, you know, lays out exactly, you know, how the decision is made and what the result should be. So those are sort of fundamental to the follow-up questions, but I think that if we can all agree to that, we don't need to spend a lot of time discussing those issues. We get then to the real fundamental question is, you know, did the health officer, making his determination, conduct his analysis in a manner that reasonably comports with the board's intent in adopting section 035? And secondly, did the health officer correctly find that there may be a significant effect on the environment? I think those are the two fundamental questions that are before you today. It's not whether, you know, we like the asphalt plant, we don't like the asphalt plant. This is a technical review provided by the code that may or may not trigger a conditional use permit. Subsequently, is, in the context of the appeal, there are some other sort of constitutional questions that have been raised in the appeal. Did the health officer interpret 035 properly, requiring him to notify the planning director? This was a part of the original appeal. I think we sort of ignore that question at this point in time. You know, it's not really an issue. Yes, if I was notified by the planning, or the health officer, that, that there was a significant effect on the environment, a condition is required. That's what the code says.
Why does number six include the word interpret? Isn't it spelled out?
It, well, that's a, and I think we can sort of, let's just put number six aside. It was part of the decision tree that we worked up, but after further discussion, but you already had it. That's not really an issue here. You know, clearly, if, you know, I don't have any really authority over this. If, if the health officer makes that finding, you know, I just notified the applicant of the requirement.
Well, I took number six to incorporate the so-called is versus may-have issue. In other words, I understand the appellant to be saying that the health officer has to find that there is a significant effect on the environment before he can send a notice to the planning director.
Well, and that really, in my mind, is the question number five. You know, the may versus is discussion is, is the, the health officer's finding. Once he makes the finding, my action is routine. In fact, it doesn't actually say, well, I guess it does say that the, it just says a conditional use permit is required, doesn't actually say that the planning director, you know, he says he notifies me. The, you know, the, the code says that if there is significant effect, the health officer shall notify the planning director. It doesn't say anything about what I'm supposed to do after that. It just says a conditional use permit shall be required. We infer that I notify the applicant. But I think that that discussion of may versus is is, it's in there, and we'll make sure that we, we address that.
Well, Mr. Wooster's question is, five, number five, did he, did the health officer correctly find that there may be a significant effect on the, on the environment? Okay. One issue. And then it's, it's bifurcated in, in the, in the appellant's opinion, and the comment that Mr. Wooster made, that number six then requires another, another process, another, another step, does it not? Because number six, the notification doesn't, doesn't come unless, according to the wording of the 035, he has found that there is a significant effect. Now, I know that there's also an argument that the is really refers to whether or not he found that there may be.
Right.
Okay?
I'm, I'm sure we will get into this discussion at length. I'm not trying to minimize that. I'm just saying that the, my action of actually notifying the appellant, the applicant, that a conditional use permit is required was part of the appeal, but that notification was more or less routine.
At the end of the day, if he, if he gives you notification, it's, it's, that's rote from that point on.
Exactly.
I understand.
Okay. And then the other components of the appeal are whether the language itself of the ordinance is unconstitutionally vague, and does the delegation of the authority to the health officer, is that an unconstitutional delegation of authority? So those are sort of the questions that will be before you, that we will review in more detail as we go through the testimony of the applicant and the health officer. So I wanted to address a little bit on the legislative history component. This was an ordinance amendment done in 1986. The intent of the original ordinance was to expand the uses. It was addressing commercial and industrial uses primarily. There were other changes to the code at the time, but as far as the industrial uses, it was liberalizing some of the uses, or creating a new M2 zone. There were a number of uses. Previously, there was a provision that this, you know, any, any use was allowed in the industrial zone. And there was a attempt to sort of clarify that, well, you know, anything in the world was a term that was used in the staff report. That that was, we're trying to get away from that, but sort of clearly list those things that would be considered, would be allowed. But there was some concern expressed that there was.
Could, could everyone just turn their phones off and alerts off? It's kind of distracting. Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So anyway, it stated in the staff report that the main change was the expansion of the permitted uses to accommodate new technologies. So we had an older zoning ordinance, we're looking at some new industrial uses, we wanted to make sure that those were incorporated into, into the code. There was a concern, however, that, you know, some of the, the industrial uses have some hazardous materials and hazardous chemicals, and that we don't want, we wanted some ability to review those kinds of, of projects that might have an effect. And, and the, so I've taken some of this text directly from the staff report that was provided to the Planning Commission at the time that this was being considered. And so the, the 035 section was added to the M2, it was later added to all the industrial zones, but it was specific to M2 initially, to the requirement that manufacturing businesses which utilize hazardous or toxic materials must obtain a use permit. That's a direct quote from the staff report. So that was the intent behind that. Also stated in the staff report that the ordinance included a proviso that when there is a potential for a significant effect on the environment, a use permit would be required. I think that's really critical, that when there is a potential for an effect on the environment. It doesn't say when there is an effect on the environment, it's when there's a potential for effect on the environment. So it gave the health officer a sort of broad latitude to make that determination. So it gave the health officer a sort of broad latitude to make that determination in our review of the legislative history. And again, it stated that the decision of the potential hazard is left with the county health officer. So it was very clear that it was the intent of the board, the health officer would make that determination, and it was based on the potential hazard. So the code requires that the health officer review the type, method of use, or quantity of substances. It's not simply a review of the list, and must consider all of those factors, the type, the method of use, and the quantity. And that the fact that we're looking at the potential, not whether there is a significant impact, but whether there's a potential for a significant impact, and that may have a significant effect on the environment associated with those substances. With regard to the constitutionality of the ordinance, the two primary arguments is that it's vague. You know, we'll freely admit that it's poorly written. It's not a good section of code. It will be one that I will relish revising as we move into the ordinance revision in the future, but it's part of our code today, and we have to live with it. We believe that the board meant to require a CUP if there was a potential for significant environmental effect. It seems very clear in the legislative history that was the intent of the board to add that. And the vagueness argument is, it's not vague to what the citizen needs to do if they are to, they want to provide, or they wanted to open up a business that uses substances, maybe hazardous, to submit, to submit a list to the, to the county. It's very clear. There's nothing vague about it. There may be some vagueness associated with the action that the health officer needs to take, but it's not unconstitutionally vague in the fact that the citizen won't know what they need to do. And as far as unconstitutional delegation, the, you know, the board has the authority to delegate, you know, technical review to its technical experts. That was clearly stated in the, the ordinance. The board intended to do that, and the health officer certainly has the qualifications to make that kind of analysis and determination. The staff report also, well, let me step back a minute. The applicant has also suggested that there are some criteria that could be used to make that determination, and it's listed four or five different criteria that they would suggest that we use. The original, the staff report referred to a list of substances that was in the county health code. That does not exist. It may have existed back in 1986, but there is nothing there today. So, it's up to the, that's what I'm looking for, the discretion, the, the informed expertise of the health officer to make that determination using what he or she may think to be the best method, the best list of uses, the best authorities, the best, you know, list of substances. And there may be some that, you know, are, that may determine that it's not a problem. There may be other authorities that say that it could be a problem. And so I, I think it's up to the health officer to make that determination, barring anything else in our code that says that it should be otherwise. Since there is nothing in the code, then it's clearly up to the review by the health The fact that the proposed asphalt plant meets the criteria that they would like us to use is really irrelevant. Those haven't been adopted by the county. It's, you know, it's not something that's set forth in our standards. This is if you meet these standards, therefore, it's not considered a significant environmental effect. That's not part of our code, and that, that argument, in my mind, is simply irrelevant. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Brian Moss and Jason Baser to discuss in more detail of their review process.
Thank you.
Brian Moss, former air pollution control officer and administrator of environmental management. I'm here today with Jason Baser, who is our current air pollution control officer and administrator of environmental management. So we'll be kind of sharing this presentation to hopefully answer some, or clarify any questions if, no, maybe we'll muddy the waters a little bit more, but we'll try not to do that. See if we can't do that, but we'll best better. There we go. So, this presentation is really going to be looking at the health officer's determination, a little bit of 035. Peter did a real good job describing that, the genesis of that code, where it came from. And so we'll just move forward from there. So, as already covered, 035 basically states that prior to a change of use, issuance of a business license, issuance of building permit, whichever occurs first, a project proponent shall submit to the county health officer or has designated a list of plan of substances to be used or produced by proposed businesses. This was done, this was really done at the June 25 meeting, we asked for the MSDS sheets, and they were delivered to us. We talked about that at our last meeting with the planning commission. So, we do indeed have those, those MSDS sheets, and have an idea of exactly what they're going to be using at the site. After that, the health officer shall review the plan or the list, determine if the type, method, or use, or quantity of substances is such that there may be a significant effect on the environment associated with that substance or substances. We talked about this at the last meeting. I'm sorry, it's a little bit of background review, but to bring us up to date, Title 17, 17042035 does certainly predate Assembly Bill 1082. We do know that 035 was written somewhere around 1985 and adopted by the local governing body. 1082 was passed in 2000 during the legislative session. It developed what is called the Unified Program, and established and delegated what are called Certified Unified Program Agencies. Calaveras County is one of those agencies, and that oversees six different programs, six different elements that are associated with hazardous materials. Jason is our COBA expert, so he can elaborate more on that if there are questions to it. Statute of authority is Health and Safety 6.11. And so for current code and current law, where does the health officer, air pollution control officer, the county go to determine as to what indeed is a hazardous material? It's going to be defined somewhere. 1985, they certainly didn't have this, but today, under 6.95, it's very clear. So hazardous material means a material listed in paragraph two that because of its quantity, concentration, or physical or chemical characteristics poses significant, a significant present or potential hazard to human health and safety or to the environment if released into the workplace or the environment, or a material specified in an ordinance adopted pursuant to paragraph three. So Jason, pick it up here. So I'm going to take over from here if things right. So in further definition of hazardous material, the code goes under, to define hazardous material basically as any substance in which the manufacturer is required to prepare material safety data sheet, now safety data sheet. So that, that has changed to which, in turn, the applicant provided the material safety data sheets for both diesel and asphalt in making our determination whether that material is hazardous or not. And also those materials that they currently report to us, the diesel fuel, because that is stored for their current operations, as part of their reporting of hazardous materials for the site. So they are defined under 6.95. Asphalt is also considered hazardous by OSHA. And we have to, I'm sure, add diesel, diesel fuel to that, too. OSHA, of course, separate, but OSHA is for employee handling of the materials. Hazardous, 6.95, in hazardous material reporting, is for emergency planning and community right-to-know. So that's what that is for, is for emergency planning, community right-to-know. OSHA is employee standards. So in reviewing the material safety data sheets that were provided to us, one of the things noted in the health officer's, Brian's determination at the time, was that the asphalt cement has material or ingredients listed under California Prop 65. And so this is a list of materials that are carcinogens, and are listed under the Office of Environmental Health and Hazard Assessment in the state of California. So that is a polished list. It is, you know, viewable by the public, and those lists are chemicals, materials on that list are studied by that state department, and determined as potential carcinogens are put on the Prop 65 list. In addition, in the determination is hot material definitely has the potential of physical hazards to the people handling it. There's also been some discussion in application regarding the, the hazard rating of the public, of this, of the asphalt. And this, this hazardous material information system is just a system to inform employees of the potential of the materials on site. Okay? So it's, you know, a health of two, flammability of one. So it's a hazardous materials identification system for the employees and/or emergency So looking at, you know, came the conclusion, yes, the materials, proposed materials at the site are hazardous materials, now looking at the quantity of the materials on site. And the proposed quantity in the application that was submitted by the applicant as the addition of 27,000 gallons of diesel fuel at the site, and also a non-specified quantity of asphalt at the site. And the asphalt is obviously asphalt coming in to the plant for their operations, and the asphalt cement product leaving is going out. And in the application, they, to the air district at the time, it was a potential for 3,000 tons per day with a maximum amount of 250,000 tons annually. And then also in addition, and I mean, the applicant can clarify this, but with a total of 625 additional trucks annually, and that was put in that location, obviously, that number would go up if they were to do maximum production each day or annually. So, but looking at the amount of material that is going to be stored on site, and the amount of material that was going to be handled on a daily basis or on an annual basis, and those are the numbers that were provided to us there. Also, just make the note, you know, it hasn't been discussed yet, but diesel fuel is, you know, solid oil and water, and it does contain more than 40 toxic air contaminants. And, and this is, this is significant in the health officer's determination that there may be a significant effect to the environment, and, and this, this information is from the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment. So on the, on the quantity of, of the, again, of the material, looking at, you know, the proposed new material coming in, and also the amount of material being handled at the site, being delivered and, and off-site. And it's important to note here, and we'll talk a little bit more about this in a couple slides, but it's the increased activity at the site with the proposed and the application that increases the potential effect of hazardous materials at the site and the surrounding area. And also looking at not just the material stored, but the trucking in and out of, of the materials, in and out, in addition also the diesel exhaust in making that determination. And so this, you know, looking at it, that with the quantity and then the capability of the material that, yes, will solidify normal atmospheric pressure, but still have an impact on the environment, and of course, building into the Calaveras River, which the material would be crossing on a daily basis. So this is just kind of example I put in, and just to further emphasize, you know, quantity and material that had been brought before, you know, a bottle of light out is not the same it would be as the same model of plutonium. And we're really looking at the type of material, quantity, and method of use in our determination. So, looking at, again, the point of use of the, is the increased handling of materials, which includes the unloading of the hot asphalt, filling the tanks, and of course, the transport of the material alongside and over the Calaveras River, which we'll discuss is a drinking water source for 10,000 residents in which CCWD processes 3.5 million gallons per day of the water. So, one thing that's important to note in also the determination is that there's no, in increased diesel emissions, which, again, OE has looked at, you know, long-term exposure for cancer risks with diesel fuel is one of the highest for toxic air contaminants. And with the increased activity of trucks coming in at the site and leaving the site, there is no, with the, it increases that, it's significant effect, not only to the environment, but public health. So, and also that there, we don't permit that, there's no standards for that transportation through the air pollution permit on, on the vehicle emissions and the fugitive emissions. And so again, these activities will be in addition to the current rock quarry activities. And going to the sensitive receptors in which is defined in CEQA, but it looks at, you know, increased sensitivity to air pollution or environmental contaminants. And this includes schools, parks, playgrounds, daycare centers, nursing homes, hospitals, and residential dwelling units. And these locations, using the CEQA air quality handbook, are, the location of these receptors is needed to assess the toxic impacts of public health. When we look at the proposed activity and its location to these sensitive receptors, we came up with through our GIS that there's 351 homes between a half mile and a mile from the subject site. And again, we have the Calaveras River, which is a drinking water source for 10,000 local residents, with the intake to that plant 2,000 yards downstream, and processes 3.5 million gallons of drinking water per day. So, and also in sensitive receptors, there's also public receptors, which are defined under the risk management program to use for off-site consequence analysis. And that goes into public receptors being anywhere where the public has access to a site. So the Calaveras River, the public can go down, swim, fish, and looking at, that would be considered a public receptor. And that is used in certain types of materials and determining off-site consequence analysis. Okay, this is actually a diagram of asphalt production. I apologize, I don't have a laser pointer with me today. But if you, if you look at this, this pressure vessel, you can see at the different stages from the very top where your natural gas comes off, and as you move down through the process, you are going to be looking at, at automotive, automotive gasoline. Thank you. That's great. Automotive gasoline, kerosene, heating oil, et cetera. As you move down, rubber plastics, et cetera. As you move down, you're going to notice that you have a material on the bottom. That's why I would call this, if you, if anybody in this room likes dark beer, that's the bo, beer, that's, that's at the bottom of the pressure vessel, and not to confuse beer with, with the pressure vessel for asphalt, but the idea is kind of the same, that the material that is at the bottom is what remains. that is at the bottom is what remains. And that's actually the asphalt. There's been a lot of confusion about asphalt versus asphalt and concrete. We've heard a lot about asphalt and concrete being used in parking lots for hospitals, et cetera, here at government center, on our roads, absolutely makes sense. The true asphalt is actually the material that comes out of the bottom of the pressure vessel. This is the material that's actually mixed with the aggregate at an asphalt plant to make asphalt and concrete. It's the binder, if you will. I am not an expert in asphalt production, but it's been a real interesting, interesting research project certainly. So I wanted, I wanted to share this, this slide, just so people in the public can really get an idea of really where the asphalt is, how it comes about, where it's going, okay? And then of course adding it, you know, once it's transported to a site and kept at a hot temperature and then mixed with, with the aggregate. Something else I wanted to bring up also, Jason was discussing about diesel emissions and really not wanting to go down the road of air pollution, but I think it's important to know that the state of California, CAL EPA, has had a program in place for many years now called the Carl Moyer Program. What is that designed to do? It's designed to do diesel retrofit for engines for everything from logging trucks, it's called the timber, the timber program, to your other sources on, on the road. And, and the point is, is that the legislature found it was necessary indeed to create a program and to approve a program and to put it into the Health and Safety Code because emissions from diesel indeed are an issue. So there's, there's a state program that addresses that and, and there's a reason for that.
So, Mr. Moss, just one, that's, you're just showing how asphalt's made.
That's all I'm, that's what I'm telling you.
Right, it's not, it's not made here and they buy it from someone else, but that's how it's made.
That is, that's, that would be at, that would be at a refinery.
Okay, I just wanted to clear that.
Thank you for the clarification, Tom.
Can you also hold that slide for a second?
Sure.
Is it true that as you go up the column in the, in the fracking process, which is what that is?
Right.
The, at the top of the column, working your way down, you're working your way down from, a lot of people know what VOCs are because you read it on a product label.
Volatile organic compounds, correct.
The higher up that column goes, the higher the VOCs, correct?
That, that, that would be correct, would you not agree, Jason?
The lower the column, the lower the column, at the bottom of the column is crude oil.
It is.
Okay.
Long chain hydrocarbons.
Right.
Long chain carbons.
And at the top is something like naphtha.
Yes, well, actually we're saying, we're calling it natural gases, what they're calling natural, and you're right, volatile organic compounds means it volatilizes at atmospheric pressure very quickly, we know that. And so, yes, you are correct, absolutely. But I'm just trying to show, this is where the asphalt comes from.
The more hazardous distillates come from the top of the column than the bottom.
From the VOC standpoint.
And the carcinogen standpoint too, correct?
Actually, I can't, there would be a higher concentration in the top versus the bottom. Yeah, I say I don't have a good, specific answer for that, but thank you, Jason.
Yeah, but when you go to the hardware store and you see the products on the shelf, MEK and whatnot, are the most hazardous, correct, in the whole hardware store?
Yes.
All right, and that's coming from the top of the column?
Right, right.
Thank you.
That is correct. Okay, there was some question, and this slide is just really showing a little background. There's some question as to the environmental health officers, you know, authority, authority is one thing, experience to make decisions was, was yet another. And we just wanted to share this, that, that at the time of the application, the director of environmental health had 21 years' experience as a director and 26 years as a registered environmental specialist training. Probably more importantly is the certified hazardous material technician, this is put on by CSTI, the state fire marshal, that was, I took that class in Ontario many years ago, and ironically, the cleanest air that I breathed in the four weeks of training was when I had a bottle on my back. So we're very fortunate here, 40-hour hazard work or 24-hour awareness. Jason has, has been implementing the certified unified program agency through CAL EPA for implementation of hazardous materials, hazardous programs for how many years now?
13.
Okay, thank you. And then of course, in addition at the program, which is unrelated to the topic today, but to give you an idea, implements 16 different environmental health and public health programs. So in summary, increased handling and storage of Prop 65 hazardous materials next to the Calaveras River, remember we're not just talking about asphalt, we're talking about diesel as well. Drinking water source for the state permitted water system and transporting hazardous materials over the Calaveras River and through a community may have a significant effect on the environment. So that is our presentation as to where we, where we came to the determination, how we came to the determination. There is no argument that O35 is a code that is, is not really clear and, and that is something that, that in time we should probably look at. But, but, you know, it is, it is in place, it says that the health officer must look at a list, if a list, when, and if a list is provided and, and make a determination from there.
And just to add to that in kind of summary, was, when the determination was made, it wasn't just looking at the storage of materials, handling the materials, but also the transportation, what type of vehicles transporting those materials in and out of the site, which all could pose an effect to the environment and to the public health. So obviously, the statute doesn't say, or in the code doesn't say public health, but if there's harm to the environment, there are going to be some public health impacts with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? So let's go ahead.
In your presentation, when you refer to...
Microphone, head.
In your presentation, when you were referring to the 3,000 tons a day of asphalt, you're talking about the asphalt itself that hasn't been added to the aggregate yet? Are you talking about the AC that's ready to put on the highway?
In the application that was provided to us by the applicant, the, the application was put that to production of 3,000 tons of asphalt production per day.
That's the asphalt and concrete, not the asphalt.
Yes, yes, not asphalt coming in, because we didn't have those numbers, so we had to use what was provided to us in the application.
We still don't, as a matter of fact, I don't believe that we actually have been able to identify yet as to just how much asphalt coming from the refinery will be brought in per day. I don't think that was identified, was it, Jason? At least not yet. And there's, there's also kind of a reason for that on the applicant's side, depending on production, they're not going to be, I mean, I'm sure they would ideally like to run this plant 24/7, that's not really realistic, it's, it's like everything else in the economy, it's a supply and demand, so they may be able to get us a better idea as to how much material they really plan on using.
Other questions?
Yes, I have a couple. There's been mention of a baghouse that's going to be employed at this plant. Can you explain to us what that does and how its presence figured into your determination?
Well, actually, there's, there's two different things here. We weren't looking at the mitigating measures, which, which part, which the baghouse is part and parcel of. This is just simply the, the use of materials, the materials coming in, the asphalt and the diesel. So that's kind of a separate issue. Once you get to mitigating measures, which, which, again, is the purpose of what we talked about before, which is the authority to construct and the permit to operate, that baghouse is designed to capture fugitive dust primarily, and as far as, you know, minimal VOCs, I don't think that it's going to have much of an effect on that, but generally baghouses are designed for fugitive dust. But again, that didn't, that didn't come into play on the health officer's determination. The health officer's determination was based only on what is the raw product that is coming in, how's it being transported, where it's being transported by, fueling, refueling, and the like. So the, the baghouses down here under the mitigating measures, we're actually at this level, looking at, are they using hazardous materials?
But, but if the baghouse is part of the method of use, why wouldn't you be considering it before you get to mitigating measures?
We, we don't consider that, again, because O35 says, are they going to use a hazardous material? The baghouse is designed for fugitive emissions, fugitive dust, that's actually not our concern at this point, but, but it's, but it's actually vital because it is a vital mitigating measure. Once a plant, like this asphalt plant is up and running, that baghouse is crucial. It's, it's, it's one of the crucial measures mitigating potential effects on the environment. But again, we, this is looking, that's looking at particulate matter, over here we're looking at hazardous materials.
One of the things on the code is that there's other state laws and federal laws that the facility, and I'm sure you guys are aware of that, the facilities have to comply with. The code doesn't reference what state and federal laws the facility's going to comply with to use in the mitigation measures. We looked at it from the holistic point, materials coming in, method of use, and the handling, and the types of materials on site to make that determination.
Okay, well, that kind of leads into my next question, which was, if you have a, an existing system of state and federal regulations, including, for example, the MSDS conditions, when you are making your determination of whether the substance and the quantity and method of use may have a significant effect on the environment, do you take into consideration the existence of those regulations which constrains, as I understand it, how they can do their, their business?
I mean, you, you know, we realize those things, the existing state laws and federal laws are in place, but if you look at excluding all the laws that would come, that would fall under, what they don't cover is the transportation under our purview of the materials in and out of the site, the handling of the materials at the site, the loading, unloading, transportation, and looking at the risk and the diesel emissions of the trucks transporting materials in and out from the site.
Okay, so you do consider those regulations, but they don't, they don't solve all the issues, is what you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
And, and I, yeah, I would say that, again, you know, just like Jason said, it's, it's the material being, being transported, et cetera. And, and quite frankly, Jason talked a little bit about the COOPA program and the six hazardous materials programs that were certified to do under CAL EPA, doesn't even look at transportation of that material. It's, it's more about storage, et cetera. So it's outside the purview, under the local, under the normal local, local purview, that would be more of a Department of Transportation, DOT kind of issues.
And I think to make it clear is that we get the application, we got this application, look at it in context of just the, the list of materials coming into us. We haven't got a list of, you know, looking at what the code says, a list of materials coming in and how it's going to be handled, but looking at how this falls under, you know, all the other state and federal laws, you know, whether it's OSHA, MSHA, we've heard of all these other things, and whether State Water Resources Control Board, that, at the point of application, it's just, this is the, the products, this is the method of use.
And the quantity.
And the quantity and type, yeah, everything in O35.
As I understand it, asphalt is pretty much hard as a rock at room temperature. And so when you're looking at the potential for a spill of hot asphalt being transported in, does anybody have any information about how quickly that hot asphalt congeals and the material hard as a rock? In other words, how likely is it to hit the river?
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, and looking at that, it, obviously outside temperature has to play with that, is it raining outside? There's weather conditions and different models on, on that and where the spill is in relation to the river. We're looking at the increased risk of the activity of the trucks transporting the material and then over the river is what we're looking at. We didn't get specific to if it was spilled here or there, because then you take into all the different environmental conditions, temperature conditions. And also looking at just the increased flow of asphalt, but also diesel fuel, because the plant is also run on diesel generator, there's going to be more fuel coming in and out of that plant. And obviously diesel is much more, you know, can migrate through, you know, the ground and impact groundwater and surface water.
And in addition to that, and Jason got a hit on it, those tankers that are bringing in the asphalt are carrying saddle tanks with them, are they not? Which powers the vehicle, makes sense, right? Jason, as a matter of fact, responded to a overturned tanker, was it two years ago? On 49?
Yeah, too many times.
But, but, yes, too many times. But, but that was, that was a very large cleanup. Fortunately, it didn't hit the McCollum River, but it was heading that way. And that was not carrying asphalt, it was just a truck with saddle tanks. Matter of fact, I think in Amador, didn't they just have an accident?
Yeah, Highway 8, but the, the incident in Calaveras County was, with, not only with the diesel field, the truck turned over on Highway 49 grade, was carrying emulsion for concrete, so, in which also had Prop 65 listed materials, and we had to work vigorously with, obviously that state highway with East Bay mud and regional water, because that is watershed before that, so.
So it involves more than just the, the hot asphalt, it's also involves transportation, the, the fuel that the, that the vehicles are using to get there. So, and we're only bringing that up because we've actually dealt with that.
And also, again, looking at the diesel exhaust, which, you know, and, and we've, just because we've dealt within the air program with the 40 toxic air contaminants and that not just from the, you know, the emissions from the vehicles, but the fugitive emissions, so.
Okay, one last one for now. There's an argument, as I understand it, that you, that before you can send a notification to the planning director, that you have to make a determination that the type, quantity or method of use is having a significant effect on the environment, if I understand it, as opposed to may have. And my question is, how would you do that before the plant is up and running? If you had to?
You can answer now, I'll follow up. Actually, actually, that is the, that is one of the major questions at hand that, that planning director Mauer brought up today, the may versus, the may versus is. The reality is, is when the health officer looks at a project and looks at the potential of a hazardous material being used, certainly, if we were to separate those two, we would have to issue a permit, we'd have to see how the plant ran first and say, oh, yes, indeed, now we can determine that there is, there is indeed a, an impact. What we're looking at is, is it a hazardous material? Yes. What is the quantity of the hazardous material? It's this. What is the method of use of the hazardous material? What are the, what are the sensitive receptors? What's our experience in overturned tankers? And, and if indeed we know that they're using both asphalt and diesel, which makes sense, certainly, we know that there may indeed be an impact, and therefore, we have to, pursuant to way O35 reads, and our interpretation is, report to the planning director to say, since there may be, there is, if you did, if you determined, again, you're going to wait until you issue a permit and say, oh, yes, now there is, it, O35 wouldn't make any sense at all. So one, you can't dissect the two, one is, is, is hinged to the other. Once we've determined there may be, yes, there may be, therefore, I think there is a, a potential impact to the environment. I think there is a potential impact to the environment. Jason? I probably bummed that up, but.
Thank you.
Can you tell me when this presentation was done?
When?
Yeah, I don't mean the slides being made, but when you had your, well, when was the presentation completed?
Last night.
Next question.
All right.
I'm sorry, we had, I want to say we had copies, so I apologize.
That's okay. What I'm getting at is, was there some documentation that could have been provided to the commission in advance of actually making the slides, so that we could have reviewed the process that you are now describing in advance of doing it in real time here?
I mean, there's staff notes, I mean, and our study of looking at the materials and the project at hand that led to the determination. But it was no formal, you know, it was staff reports. There's no formal letter besides Brian's determination on July second, correct?
Correct. That is correct. So, Jason is correct. There was no list or form that we've gone through and said, okay, we're going to put this in our PowerPoint presentation to present to the planning commission. That didn't exist. We were literally still working on it yesterday and wrapping it up last night, which I hate doing. But we wanted to make sure that we had all the information so that we could certainly give the planning commission the best information that we have.
It appears from the presentation that your consideration of the component method of use is, concentrates on the incoming liquid bitumen and the diesel, increased use of diesel in the trucks, coming and going.
Yes, in addition to that is the loading and unloading and that kind of thing as well, the method of use.
And the storage of the material on site.
And the storage?
Yeah.
Not the actual production of asphaltic concrete out of the machine?
Well, that, but that could also, that's part of the handling of it.
But I'm not seeing it in the presentation. I mean, I'm just.
Sorry if we missed it, but that was discussed in part of the unloading, the unloading and loading of the material, I can go back to that slide we did.
You did mention that, I've got it on my notes.
No, loading and unloading, I got that, but not the actual.
The coal system itself.
Right. Not the, not the production of fumes or whatever from the machine itself as it's making the product.
That is part, and I'm sorry if we missed that, but that would be part of also the determination of the, through the exhaust or the air emissions is part of the overall use of the material.
And that tied in a little bit more, Mr. Tuno, with what we discussed last time under the authority construct being the discretionary versus ministerial. Why was it necessary to look at it in that detail and at that depth? Really don't want to go down the ATC line, because we discussed that ad nauseam. But that was more on the air end of it. Again, going back to O three five, focusing on O three five, it was a matter of, it's on air pollution, the health officer determination, are they using a hazardous material? And is there, may it have an effect on the environment? So, I want to kind of refocus that. That's valid, certainly, but that has more to do with the authority constructing, the permit to operate, and the mitigating measures that the applicant will be taking as part of the plan.
Authority, the rules on authority to construct, the ten eighty-two that you referenced.
Ten eighty-two, it has nothing to do with authority.
It has to do with air, and that, I thought that was your.
Well, ten eighty-two, ten eighty-two is not under the air district, that's under the Cooper Program, under the unified program. Jason, what are the elements of that?
Yeah, so, ten eighty-two is under the handling and storage of materials. The air part is under the air district. Ten eighty-two is hazardous material business plan law for emergency planning, community right to know, hazardous waste law, the storage generation of hazardous waste, above-ground storage tank law, and then tier treatment and risk management plans. And part of fire codes, so that is ten eighty-two. It's basically the handling and storage of hazardous material and hazardous waste.
I guess what I'm trying to do is get a fix on why the actual production is not part of the analysis on method of use, but more the in-and-out flow of bitumen and extra diesel and the use of diesel on site, which would be the generator and the trucks.
I would say it's because the air district is implementing and working with the applicant on the mitigating measures for that. I mean, that's a separate process. Maybe I'm not understanding that correctly, but, again, as far as the emissions, and yes, there will be emissions, you're absolutely correct, and that was brought up the other day, that is going to be addressed, and would that have a potential impact? Yes, potentially, but the reality is, again, under O three five, O three five doesn't say anything about that. We're looking at, again, under ten eighty-two. And by the way, the other thing that was confusing for ten eighty-two, because we brought it up last time, was that is what established hazardous materials, hazardous material list, and how it's defined.
Okay, you're talking about what you, as the air officer, are doing separately from you as the EHO?
Correct.
Okay.
You are correct.
Okay, but air, in the sense of the diesel fume, the diesel emission issue was central to your analysis here?
It is, I think Jason was talking more about, not the plant, but more about the transportation.
Yeah, and I apologize if we did not clarify that or cover that. But it's the overall use, and it's the production in the, not only the trucking in and out, but also the production of the material at the site. I mean, looking at the handling of that and the, you know, the filling of the tanks, the discharge of the material out of the asphalt machine into the trucks as part of that. And if we didn't specifically cover the baghouse, but that would also be part of it, because in the diesel emissions, in diesel that's used, there's toxic air contaminants in that that has the potential to have an effect on the environment.
Okay, now, this applicant currently operates a rock quarry.
Correct.
Trucks come and go.
Correct.
The trucks have saddle tanks on them.
Yes, they do.
If, and you're talking about an increase in truck traffic that is of concern.
Correct.
Correct? Six hundred and twenty-five trucks trips a day, or however the market, something. Some variation on that, perhaps. The applicant can shed some more light on that. If the applicant simply had more demand for their rock product, they got a contract to sell more rock than they're selling now, and the truck traffic could increase by conceivably the same amount without an asphalt plant, correct?
Correct.
And they wouldn't be subject to this.
As long as it's not a change of use.
That's not a change of use.
Exactly, and I was just going to address that, wrote down change of use. It is a change of use issue. The current rock plant, I do not believe, has any conditional use permit. I think it predates.
It does not.
It does not, yes. And it predates that, because it was used in the, my understanding, in the building in New Hogan Dam. And so, at this point, there are no conditions from the planning end of it on the plant for, let's say, conditional use permit. It is overseen by the air district right now, essentially for fugitive dust, okay? It's overseen by the Environmental Health Department in the storage of material, am I correct? And diesel?
Yes.
And I believe that they have a business plan as well? So, they are, they're already overseen by both Environmental Health and the air district. The key point here is, is you now have a change of use. You're going from a rock plant, and now you're changing the use.
I know how we got here, I'm just trying to put it in perspective. The applicant, right now, could increase its truck traffic by some number, depending on what, how many rocks it sells, right? And we got nothing to say about that.
We have nothing to say about that unless somebody knows something I don't.
Right.
That is correct.
Okay, and the, the trucks that's, that bring the gasoline to the gas stations here in town are traveling over the roads. And there's travel, and the roads have bridges over the river, including the Calaveras River and every other river. I mean, that goes on every day.
Every day.
Right?
Absolutely.
Not just the saddle, the saddle tanks, but the actual product in the tens of thousands of gallons that they're pulling?
Correct.
All right. Does California Code, California, the state, require you to consider a list of materials, hazardous materials, different than the federal government, for example?
Yes.
Okay. And is it, it has, it can't be less than the federal government, right? It has to be more?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so where the federal government, and I'm reading, looking at the Federal Register here, where the EPA in two thousand and two says, dealing with asphalt concrete, writes, based upon the above information, we have concluded that no asphalt concrete manufacturing facility has the potential to emit HAP approaching major source levels. That's not, you don't get to consider that? Because the state says, forget that, we've got our own list?
That we get to, on the hazardous air pollutants is covered, it's considered, but the state has its own consideration under air pollution. Brian, you might be able, can talk about that more, under the toxic air contaminants versus the hazardous air pollutants, how they go together. I mean, we're getting into, the state takes those standards and can have more stringent standards.
And you're saying it does?
On versus haps, on the hazardous air pollutants?
Yeah.
I believe so, it does, yes.
Okay. Does the state have?
And just to clarify that, and that's put into, those aren't, you know, it's a Title V permit, and it's looking at the toxic air contaminants. So, it's, I mean, we're getting into separate permitting issues that, you know, kind of is taken away from, you know, our determination as far as the method and use of materials on site.
Well, I don't know that it's getting away from it, I'm trying to get right to it. I may be off track, but I think I'm in the ballpark.
Well, again, I think we're looking, I would redirect it back to the fact, you know, are we talking about hazardous materials? The answer is yes. O three five says, the health officer should still make a determination as to whether hazardous materials are, may be, are used at the site and may have an impact on the environment. And therefore, report this to the planning director. Would have liked to have been here in nineteen eighty-five when they adopted that, but.
Okay. With your finding that deals with the, your concern being the transportation of the product and the diesel emission issue, when, when and if this goes on to Mr. Maur for his consideration, then is he limited to addressing the concerns flowing out of EHO? Vis a vis O thirty-five? In other words, he doesn't get to make up his own list, he's got to deal with yours, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
To deal with that, yes.
Okay, so he would be looking at, all right, what's the real hazard of trucks flowing, trucks rolling down the road with saddle tanks of diesel fuel in them and a load of bitumen in the back over the bridge of the Calaveras River? A, right?
No, I would not look at that. I would typically transmit the information provided to me by the health officer.
Transmit it to where?
The health officer.
Okay.
The health officer makes a determining term.
Well, when you, okay, you transmit it to the applicant, but then there's a process that you're going through to, because it requires you then to conduct, to issue a CUP.
That's correct, that a CUP would be required.
Would be required, and that process of, that CUP process is what you're just now referring to in a kind of a back and forth with the applicant, am I right?
Yes, I'm not sure exactly of the question.
Fine, just tell me what the process is, from that point on, then I can ask a better question.
Well, I'm notified by the health officer that he had made a finding, there may be a significant effect. And from that point on, I work with the applicant to process their request for conditional use permit if they want to move forward. We would then address some of these issues through the environmental review that's required under conditional use permit, mitigation measures associated with all of the issues would be addressed. But the determination under O three five is made by the health officer. I'm not involved in that, other than he lets me know. And I make sure then that we process conditional use permit.
If there was no rock quarry there, it was a bare piece of M two land, and somebody wanted to put in a warehouse, right? There's going to be trucks going to and fro. Now, I think warehouse is a permitted use under even M one, correct?
Yes.
Right? And, but we're now talking M two, which is more liberal. But nevertheless, a warehouse, someone wanted to put in a warehouse on that chunk of land, and there would be trucks going to and from, and there would be diesel stored on site, and maybe some propane for forklifts or whatever. Wouldn't that prompt, would that prompt the same action from EHO officer vis a vis O thirty-five?
I don't think so, and I say that because, again, we're talking about the handling of the material as well as the transportation. So, if I have a warehouse and I'm bringing in dry goods, right? I do have saddle tanks on my trucks, that's true, there's no question about that. As far as, as far as whether under planning it would require anything, I can't answer that, because I'm not that person. But I would say that the difference is, if you have an asphaltic bed plant, you're going to be loading and unloading materials, raw and produced, as part of the process, so, and of course, in processing as well. And that kind of gets into the air end of the end. But the reality is, is you're handling a lot more materials in that case than you would if you're simply delivering a truckload full of groceries.
I understand about that, but I'm picking up on what Jason said about the concern over increased truck traffic period, never mind what it's carrying.
I wasn't, when I went back to the truck traffic, I was talking about, you said, from emissions, I also included fugitive emissions from the product that is being hauled in and out of the site. And I'm sorry if I didn't spend more time talking about it. So, in the whole determination, it wasn't just, it's including the transportation of the material, but also, as we said before, the handling, storage, and use of the material at the site. It's all of that into one, as part of that activity.
I think I'm done for now. Oh, no, I'm not quite done. I'm sorry, one more question. I think one of the first comments was that OSHA considers this a hazardous product?
The hazardous material?
Hazardous material?
Yeah.
Can you explain why, when we're seeing a paving crew on the road, they're not wearing any protective gear?
I'm not an OSHA inspector, it's just when staff research what fell into hazardous materials under the OSHA standards, this was there. I'm sure that they have to comply with personal protective equipment and other type of, if there was, you know, handling the material gloves, eyeglasses, I'm not sure, I'm not an OSHA inspector, so.
What do we require of our paving crew right here in the county?
Again, I'm not an OSHA person, so I can't.
Well, never mind OSHA, what do we what do we tell our workers to do?
And that's that's actually that's actually a question from Public Works, and I'm not going to venture to guess as to what kind of personal protective equipment they wear or they use. I think the thing back to the OSHA issue is where that part of that information came from was from the MSDS sheet itself, if I'm not if I'm not correct about that, from I believe that is correct. So as far as level A, B, and C in hazardous materials, level A being the maximum, that's that fully encapsulated suit, and I know I'm going down a bunny trail here, but the reality is, you know, that's that's your vapor, that's your liquid uh protection, B is a bottle on the back with tiebacks, boots, gloves, et cetera, and it's what we call an SCBA, self self contained breathing apparatus. C is essentially I'm wearing some work gloves, I'm wearing some boots, I'm wearing some steel toe boots, so I brush my feet, those kinds of things. I don't know where Public Works goes with this, probably level C, but I don't know, they would have to answer that question for you, as far as personal protective equipment.
Well, having worked on a paving crew, I can guarantee you it's C.
I would think it would be.
You done?
Yeah, for now.
Did you have something, Kelly? Looks like you.
Yes, I'm picking up on a question Commissioner Tuno asked. If if this was a warehouse or an operation that did involve hazardous substances at the plant or the new operation, but did involve numerous diesel truck trips to and from the operation, I think I'm hearing that O three five wouldn't be triggered because there's no hazardous substance being used at the operation.
That would be my understanding of O three five.
Okay, now, if that's the case, why is it appropriate to include the increased risk by virtue of just the diesel part of the truck transportation in and out for this plant when it wouldn't be for a plant that did not itself produce hazardous materials?
Well, I again, you're going, I think it goes back to the issue of it's a packed plant and the handling and and the quantity, so, well, even thinking quantity out of it, it's the handling, it's the loading, it's the offloading, as in addition to, I think what I think we've really gotten focused in on just this transportation in and out of the plant, there's also what are they doing at the point of use, setting the air the air district aside and the air emissions aside, just loading, unloading of of the material and what they're using. So they probably even use diesel at the site as well in addition to the in addition to the obviously the vehicle, so that is that is how I would see the difference.
Okay, but then what then when Planning Director Maurer goes to discuss and try to work out a CUP, is he going is he supposed to, can he, must he deal with just the additional truck traffic that's going to be entailed here in and out as respects the diesel end of it? In other words, I understand the hot asphalt and all that, but I'm having trouble seeing how this is going to work if this increased diesel uh usage, okay, going in and out, is going to be part of the CUP equation. Is he going to have to do that?
I I will tell you real quickly, and I'll let and I'll let him answer that, one of the things, what happens on on a project, planning will send out a notice to all the departments, fish and wildlife included and other departments as well, do you have any comments? The air district would come back and say that they have their comments for SEQA, okay, if you will, in terms of the air district is going to ask how many trips per day, what are the emissions and 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 the like, so that is actually covered under the air district. It's not part of the authority construct at all, it's not part of the permit to operate the plant, it's separate and distinct, it's over here to say, okay, you're going to be constructing this, what are the emissions during construction of the plant? What are the emissions once the plant is up and going? What are the emissions of the vehicles coming back and forth? We don't get involved in the roads, we don't get involved with anything like that, we we do get involved in the emissions. So similar projects, somebody decides to, non hazardous, but they decide to put in a development. What is the air district looking at, and what are they going to ask the planning department to look at? They're going to look at, say, we want a study to know, you know, what is the activity, what are the what are the what are the emissions, and oh, by the way, most it's very simple, but one of the most critical issue, how are you going to mitigate fugitive dust as you're as you're building the project? Once you're up and running, what's what's the calculated increased in emissions because now you have now you have a new project? So I would say, you know, that is what the air dis- air district would be looking at to tell planning to look at from the air standpoint alone here.
I would concur with what Brian said, and sort of in a nutshell, the O three five determination is narrowly focused on this issue of does this plant, does this proposal have the potential under hazardous materials to affect the environment? Once we get into a sequent process, it's the whole of the project, it's ongoing transportation issues, it's construction, all all the issues that might be raised through the development and operation of any project needs to be considered. We may find that there's no impact, but we would need to look at that. So ongoing transportation issues, even a residential project, we have to look at how many vehicle trips a day are associated with a subdivision.
So so they get kicked into the sequent swamp basically because of the use of the asphalt. But once they get kicked into the sequent swamp, then everything they do is subject to the environmental analysis, whereas absent the asphalt, none of this would be happening. If it was a warehouse, none of this would be happening, and somehow that doesn't seem quite right to me.
That that was the prerogative of the board when they adopted this ordinance, to say, we are concerned about things such as asphalt, uh to the point that they it should have that kind of analysis.
Okay, but what if the concern is with asphalt, then why does that concern not stay with asphalt throughout the process?
But it's it's not just asphalt, it's asphalt and diesel, it's it's any hazardous material. And so they're not only.
Yes, but.
Transporting asphalt, but bitumen to the site, they're transporting diesel to the site to operate the the plant.
Right, but we're trying to make it just for our, we're trying to make a distinction between this application and some other benign application like a warehouse, where suddenly none of those issues are are on the table.
O three five doesn't address benign or non hazardous material.
Oh, okay.
I I because I'm missing something. Um I mean, if you have, let's go back to warehouse issue, what if you have a warehouse that is is a storage unit for hazardous materials? Would be a project, would be something we look at under O three five? Yes, certainly, the way O three five is written today, if if it's storing.
Rubber bunnies.
Probably not.
Okay, it's storing rubber bunnies.
Right.
Okay, stuffed animals. All we're talking about is trying to isolate what the particular issues are
Hazardous materials.
With respect to an asphalt plant application as opposed to something else, so that it doesn't become the world of concerns. Well, I'm not trying to, if we have this holistic approach to everything, then everything becomes uh subject to a CUP. Now, we know that that's not the case, right?
That's right.
Okay, so in this particular instance, what triggers the determination from the EHO with respect to O three five, the affirmative determination is what? It's the use uh it's the transport in and out of the bitumen, and it's dumping into a tank.
And and diesel.
And the use of diesel on site to run a generator that operates the system.
And the plant, yes. And every and part of that is for us to look at everything else as part of the the effect in that determination, because once it came to us, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, because you're the one initially made the determination, is that is is from a health officer's standpoint, is looking at all effects of the environment to that could have significant effects that could happen to the environment by the operations. Those main things what you listed is what brought it into O three five. As the health officer's determination, we looked at the other things that we talked about the transport to besides everything else.
Well, I don't know what you mean by brought it into O three five, O three five is just there, O three five apparently applies to everything.
It triggered O three five.
Everything.
Triggered O three five.
Everything in M one and M two is is subject to O three five.
Yeah.
If you want it to be.
If you want it to be.
Right? It's subject to O three five regardless.
Yes, and then if and then if the application has hazardous materials or not, we would look at it at that point in time.
Okay, can I can I ask you about an example of an auto shop? An auto body paint shop, which has lots of hazardous material in it? Okay, um it's a permitted use, and yet presumably it would be subject to O three five, correct?
It it would be, depending on the materials, uh I mean, coming into us, we would look at it from that standpoint.
Well, if the materials are awfully hazardous.
Yep, and then look.
They're at the top of that frac.
And then and then we would have to make a determination.
So someone coming in with the with a a per uh application to put in an auto body paint shop in an M one or two zone is going to be subject to O three five?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. So this was the asterix that we talked about a few weeks ago, correct? Permitted use is not really permitted, it's there's an asterix.
Right.
Until we clean this up?
Can we go to the table?
Hopefully, one more. If you had disregarded the um issue of the diesel fuel and diesel emissions and the trucks coming to and from the plant, don't worry about the saddlebags, don't worry about what's coming out of the exhaust, if you had disregarded those, would you still make the determination that you did, the may have determination?
Only because of the bitumen, asphalt, yes.
Do you have a question?
I have a lot of questions. I I'm going to go back to O three five, I think where the confusion came in today for us is that we were explained that O three five is dealing with hazardous materials, and then you guys, and every time they brought it up, you've kind of shut them down and said, don't go there, but in your presentation, you kept talking air quality from the diesel trucks. So are are you seeing the fumes from the trucks as being air quality or those being now considered the hazardous material?
I would say that that would be, I would I would call that more air quality.
Okay, so we're not even looking at that.
You're right, which could be looked under 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 planning.
Okay, because I'm going to say, if you look at the diesel trucks.
It's more about the diesel, liquid diesel, the and 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 the bitumen.
That we're transporting all over our county every day, I mean.
That is correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
So I think that's where part of the confusion came in, is so we're going back to O three five, I have a question that I want to ask, and that is, if O three five did not exist, how would you be handling this?
We would have, we would have required the authority to construct, as we did from the air district standpoint, we would have, we had our engineer review it outside engineer, which we did.
Okay.
We would have approved the authority construct as as long as they met the requirements, they would have put the plant together, uh they would have operated under the conditions of the authority construct, and after that time, a permit to operate with similar conditions would be an annual permit would be given to the to the applicant to run the plant. The other side of it, from the environmental health end of it, Jason would have been requiring additional information on the above ground storage tank information, and he would have required a an update on the business plan, is that correct, Jason? That's how that would have been handled.
Okay, so the other thing that you guys referenced was talking about the Calaveras River. I I guess what I struggle with is that this company is registered with twenty-two different state agencies of authorities that oversee how things are being stored as far as the hazardous materials, and we're adding this extra layer that's already covered. But all all of these things that you're talking about, every step of the way, has already been addressed, and they already comply with all of those things, whether they're just running a rock quarry, or they run an asphalt plant alongside it, all of those things are are covered. So I'm struggling, and I'm really struggling with O three five, and since that's what this meeting is about today, I'm going to go back there. It is so poorly written, it is making an absolute disaster out of this entire project. The way that you just explained it, I would expect to see things happen. So I know we are not a legislative body sitting here, and we don't have the right to go and address O three five, we just have to look at the ordinance and say, this is how it has to be dealt with today. But I I just, I mean, I guess I'm really struggling with your guys' determination on diesels, because Jason, you were really hammering that air quality with that diesel, and these trucks today and tractors, I happen to own a few, so I know, and I handle diesel. We have so many restrictions on top of us now, and we had to replace everything and come into state compliances, that I will think that you could go out there and find a state registry that says these trucks are running real clean right now compared to what they used to, so I I just it just feels like at every turn, everything I read is a scare tactic. And I think if we take a look at the standards the state has in place for everybody to comply to, it's not really as scary as everyone's making it out to be.
And looking at O three five, it wasn't, you know, we it doesn't direct us to look at all the state's standards, you know, that's there, whether fortunately or unfortunately, and it was looking at not just the the fuel and the bitumen and all the, you know, looking at O EHA standards, you know, from a health officer's standpoint, you know, Brian and I discussed is the significant effect, and, you know, we have, we can't ignore what O EHA has published on diesel fuel and and the exhaust, and in looking at the proximity of the plant to sensitive receptors and and public receptors, so, and I, you know, I agree with you, with there is a lot of standards, but.
There is.
Looking at it from the O three five, how it's written, and what we had to look at in determination with health and safety studies out there is what was incorporated into that determination.
And I understand that, but when I look at the Calaveras River that you kept talking about as well, DWR will be involved in that, there will be so many protections put in place to protect that Calaveras River and drinking water, and then you've got CCWD that looked at it, signed off if they agreed to do certain things, all of those things have been addressed. So as far as this presentation, I would have rather you stuck to O three five hazardous material, and you brought a lot of other things into it that I don't think are are part of our decision making today.
I I think to maybe clear that up a little bit, the 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 point of the presentation was to to let the planning commission know what what we know to be a hazardous material, how it's identified, who regulates it, who oversees it, there's no there's no argument about the layers of protection in place as provided by either the federal or especially the state of California, whether it be the California Department of Public Health, or it be Department of Toxic Substances Control, or or the Regional Water Quality Control Board, there's no question about that. The issue is is that that the health officer is faced with making a determination under Title seventeen as to whether a hazardous material is being used and doesn't have, may it have a potential impact on the environment? And to look to look for us, again, sorry if that confused the issue with the hazardous materials, we just wanted to demonstrate, this is, you know, what hazardous material is, this is the background, et cetera, but under O three five, again, a separate and distinct thing, fortunately or unfortunately, from all of those other safeguards, which we certainly wouldn't argue at all about.
Okay, so what are your what are your on your list of hazardous materials under O three five, what are the items?
It would be anything that would be under state law, would it not?
Yeah, it would be, because there was.
No, 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 no. You made a determination that there's hazardous materials being used, what specifically are those items?
The only two items that were submitted to us were the diesel and. The only two items that were submitted to us were the diesel and asphalt cement, and both of those are the hazardous materials.
Okay, which their company already has the authority to haul diesel in and out of there and use, and road trips with trucks. So, that one's kind of a borderline iffy for me. If they add 600 trucks a year, how much are we really adding to the impacts of hazardous material at that point in time? You're looking at 10,000 road trips, and you're saying, "Now, it's really, really hazardous," when, and when in reality, it already exists, and we're only adding 600 trucks. The bitumen, I can see, but they have got, if you wanted to take it beyond 035, we've, they've got safeguards in place with that, that they're going to be looked at so strictly by the state in every level, as well as the environmental health, that it's being properly taken care of. So, I guess I'm really struggling with all of this and the way that it's being handled, because it is an existing business, and it, and it's because they're making a change to it. In my mind, there's only one chemical being brought in that's never brought in before. So, I mean, that's how I'm looking at it, and if that's in compliance with every other asphalt plant in the state, and that's how they're handling it, I, I'm bothered by that. I wanted to ask you, Brian, a specific question based on our last meeting over this. You had talked about other counties, big counties, Bay Area, who you don't get any more environmentally protective than them, I think you said Santa Barbara?
I don't know about Santa Barbara, I know Bay Area.
Okay, so, you sent out a memo asking people how they handle.
I didn't get a response.
I thought you got three responses, is that what you not, you told us you had three responses back?
I'm sorry, I don't recall that. I know that the Bay Area for sure, I, I put out a request to the California Air Pollution Control Officers Association for that, and I did receive a response, no, I did receive this response, unless I'm missing something.
Are you talking regards to the air pollution discretionary ministeral permit?
I am, I am referencing that, because we, he was, he, he basically gave us a presentation telling us that we have standards in Calaveras County that are archaic, basically is how I would put it, and that other counties that are very environmentally protected, and he spoke of ocean counties, you know, that are on the coastal areas, spoke of the Bay Area, and that their process was streamlined, simple. It, it encouraged business because there was so much authority controlling all of them with the state agencies. So, I, I guess I was looking forward to hear what you got back, because I, I swear you said you got three reports back from different counties.
I apologize, I don't recall that, but I do, and it's funny because I put out, I put out more than one request.
Okay.
And, and I, I want to say, I asked the Air Pollution Control Association a couple times, and, and I don't, do not recall getting anything back, they said they would look into it for me. I do know, and it's, and it's quite frankly through the applicant, that I know that the Bay Area Air Quality Management District apparently has a ministerial process in place for this type of activity. That I do remember stating, and I do remember that being very clear, but, and then there was a comparison, well, the Bay Area Air Quality Management District has, why doesn't Calaveras County Air Pollution Control?
Was that ministerial for an authority to construct?
I would say, yes, it was, and that was for, apparently it's for asphalt back plant, asphalt back plants. I have not been down there, I don't really know, but that's my understanding, and I also went on to state that if Calaveras County Air Pollution Control Board wanted to adopt additional rules that would allow this to become a ministerial action, then indeed, that's something that the board would in fact authorize.
Okay, I'm in, I'm going to save the rest of my questions for later.
We're going to hear from the applicant, right? We can come back, but.
I hope so.
But Lisa was in part asking the same question that I'm asking, and that is, what's different about this application that drives the decision that you made? And you brought up a lot about air quality, but apparently that's, that's not it, that's not part of it.
This is just health officer determination.
But, but I think in health officer determination, that is looking at, you know, and, and looking at just whole 35, the way it is, health officer determination, and when you look at environment, it's looking at just not water, air, it's all the quality, it's not limited to one environmental media, and you have the different, you know, you have diesels and the bitumen on site, it's, you know, just, and I'm stating this just in how 035 is written, this is not, you know, I'm looking at it from that standpoint, it's all environmental media and, and the potential effect on the environment.
Well, when the, when the Board of Supervisors approves 035 in 85 or 6, or whenever it was, they don't tell the AHO how to implement it, do they?
No.
And in fact, that's the case with laws on a regular basis.
Now, they've gotten better.
Yeah, I mean, with the statutes, now there's regulations on the implementation concept and how you do it.
Yeah, but, but it is true, 035 is, is not the best piece of, of code that I've ever reviewed, and certainly is, is, is the cause.
We can go on all day about how bad 035 is.
We can, but that's why we're here today, is because of 035.
Okay, but we, maybe we can make a little bit of sense out of it, okay? There are some components, you do have to look at the type, the method of use, and the quantity.
Correct.
Okay, and then you have to define, you have to determine that there's a significant effect, okay? And that's not, that's an important word.
There may be a significant.
May be a significant effect.
Right.
Okay. But what, apparently, part of your determination that there may be a significant effect didn't include any, any mitigation or subtraction factors, right? Subtracting out that CCWD is satisfied that the, with, with respect to the danger to the river, okay? That's not subtracted out.
Correct, that is correct. 035 doesn't require.
Doesn't go there.
Oh, 035 probably wouldn't write that into the code, would it? It would, it would, it leaves it up to you to come up with a methodology, all right? But I'm just saying, in your methodology, you didn't subtract out any of those factors.
Correct, as far as the CCWD letter, correct.
We didn't take into consideration mitigating measures of, of the plant, or, or CCWD, or Stockton East, or whoever, we did not take them into account. All we looked at is, is a hazardous material.
Is it on the list?
Being used at the site.
Okay, and you determined that there may be a significant effect regardless of any mitigating factors, for the record?
We, yeah, for the record, we were not, we didn't, didn't make this determination and include mitigating measures, you are correct. We're just looking at the raw product, the raw, that this is what's being used at the site under a change of use, that is correct. Didn't take into consider, kind of consideration, maybe any measures of the plant.
Okay, but then, at the end of the day, you concluded that there may be a significant effect.
That is, that may be a significant effect of a, through the use of a hazardous material, that is correct.
And you, and you were able to do that without considering any mitigating factors?
We, we did that, we, the way we read 035, it doesn't address mitigating factors, I wish it did, but we just looked at it as raw material.
But again, 035 would not include a sentence, "Consider please mitigating factors."
But part of it is, is too, is when this, as far as the mitigating factors, when they submit an application to us, we, you know, when this is coming in, is what, what are those mitigating factors going to be? We don't, you know, as far as the, the CCWD letter, the, the state water board, whatever it may be, we, you know, that is handled further down in the process of what all those mitigating factors, even though, yes, knowledge of what some of those are, but don't at the time of, you know, somebody came to the county and said, "This is what we're going to do," they may not even know of what all of those mitigating factors may be, you know, they probably would if they do their homework and stuff, it's, and unfortunately, and this is written, you know, we did not look at the mitigating factors, as Brian stated.
Okay, as part of your analysis of method of use, none of the controls on method of use in this application were considered.
That's correct.
Okay.
Well, when they come to you with their plan, suppose they put in their plan, "We're going to comply with every state and federal regulation that exists, and we're going to comply with all the conditions on the MSDS, and that's all, that's part of our plan, and that's part of our method of use," how could you not consider those things?
Again, I, I would, I would tell you that the way we looked at and interpreted 035 was, are they using a hazardous material that may be or have a significant effect on the environment associated with the substance only? I understand, I understand the, the issue with, well, why can't we include mitigating measures, why, and, and such, I wouldn't even argue that, but again, the way staff looked at this code, "The health officer shall review the plan or the list to determine if the type, method of use, and quantity of substances is such that there may be a significant effect on the environment associated with the substance." Again, not looking at mitigating measures, and, and like I, I stated to Commissioner Miradis is, I'm losing my point, I derailed myself, but, but normally, this is it, normally we would just do the ATC, PTO, and business plan, and above-ground storage tank, that's what we do throughout the county, this is the first.
That's what they do throughout the state.
Yes, but we definitely do the, and it is under the Cooper program for, for environmental health, but that set aside, we did not take into account mitigating measures of the plant or other mitigating measures, no, we just looked at, is there a hazardous material, is it being used, does it have a potential impact?
If you're, if you're talking about method of use.
Pardon?
If you, if you look at.
Let me.
If you look at method of use, don't you have to kind of assume that they're going to use it properly? And if they're going to use it properly, that kind of covers it, doesn't it?
Well, I think it covers its part, but the other part of it is, is again, you get back to the, the loading and unloading of bitumen, okay? We'll, we'll just leave diesel out of it at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, so, just, just the bitumen alone is, is part of the method of use is loading at the tanks, you know, are you going to have spills? Again, from the broader perspective, transportation of bitumen up and down Silver Rapids Road, is, is that a potential? Is there a potential to have a significant effect on the environment? If the tanker goes into the river, I'm guessing, yes, there is that potential, and that's really what we're looking at. But Ted, I do agree, in part with what you're saying, you're saying, "Well, part of that process is already taken care of, and of the mitigating measures of the air pollution control permit and the plant itself." But there are, the, the addition to that is, again, we'll just stay with bitumen, the transportation and the loading and unloading as part of the method of use, but it's just part of the method of use.
And that's done in a concealed containment unit.
Pardon?
The transfer's done in a concealed unit.
It is, it absolutely.
And I would say, bitumen on a rural road being transported would be far safer than being in a big city on a freeway. So, I mean, it is.
Okay, let, can we talk about the, the Board of Supervisors' intent with respect to 035 back when, okay? Given that there's a list of permitted uses for M1 and M2, we know that 035 applies to both M1 and M2. I gave, previously, I gave the example of an auto body shop. The materials in an auto body paint shop are much more hazardous than bitumen, agreed?
Yes.
By, by magnitudes greater, in terms of carcinogens and, and whatnot?
The quantities are usually a little bit lower, but yes.
Okay, but it's like, it's like the plutonium example, right? It doesn't take much of it to create a big hazard.
Right.
All right? Now, a, you would agree that the Board of Supervisors did not intend for every permitted use in M1 and M2 to be subject to a conditional use permit, that's why they have permitted uses, but, talking about intent.
I, I would defer more, hey, Peter, on that.
I would agree that the intent of that ordinance was that they wanted to look at the potentially significant impacts.
Great, because at the time they had the ordinance, there were already a list of permitted uses. I don't know if it's gone larger or smaller, but it was there.
Right.
So, they didn't, they didn't intend to put a big red mark through all those and subject.
They did not say, they did not say they wanted every industrial use to go through a conditional use permit. Those use permits that, under the, the determination of the health officer, had the potential for significant, significant effect, were going to go through the use permit process.
Right, so, in the case of the, so, they, they did not intend to have every application be subject to a CUP, that's clear.
Right.
Only the ones that had this significant impact potential, and it required you to go through a process, person in your position. So, in the case of the, my example, there might be a better one, auto body paint shop, very hazardous materials, right? Significant quantities, because that's all they're doing, is their painting cars, so they're using, I don't know, hundreds of gallons of.
Most auto body shops that we, that are, go through our office, their paints are, don't exceed 100 gallons total, and they're in one gallon drums because of paint.
They're in one gallon containers?
Yes.
Right, okay. But it's very hazardous material, and in the analysis of the method of use, you would take into consideration the fact that it's in a paint booth, it's sealed, the paint booth is certified, there's filtration systems, OSHA has everything to do with it, OSHA's involved, EPA is involved, state is involved in controlling that, right?
Right now, we're in the, in the Air District.
Right, and so, someone applying for a permit for that operation in an M1 or M2 zone would not be subject to 035, correct? Oh, pardon me, it would be subject to 035, but you wouldn't find, you wouldn't find a significant effect.
It depends on the application and how much material, I mean, we're getting into hypotheticals, and I, I mean, if they submitted, I mean, well, as far as.
Hypothetical, these things happen, these, these exist.
I know, but they do exist, and most of them don't have more than a gallon of acetone on site, and they, they, they don't fall under reporting under the business plan law because they don't exceed 55 gallons of a liquid, so, we're getting, the, the materials are low, but depending on the application, when it came into 035 in that zone, if, based on the type, quantity of use, if there was a significant effect, we'd have to look at it. It's hard to make that determination without seeing everything in front of us to make a, a valid determination on that, and I understand, you know, I mean, we, according to 035, we would have to look at it, and based on the application, and, and the staff report into it, where it's located, and if there's going to be some effect on the environment, to make a determination from there. Correct me if I'm wrong, Brian.
So, the intent of the, of the ordinance, according to the board back in 85, was the environmental officer looks at everything?
That's the way.
That's what the ordinance reads, any business license, building permit, or change of use.
And, and does not consider mitigating factors in doing so?
It does not, in what's written in the document.
That's your reading of 035?
That is correct.
All right.
So, at this point, would the applicant or the applicant's agent like to make a presentation for the commission?
Would this be a good time for a quickie?
If you'd like.
It's 11:30.
If you'd like one?
I would.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll take, how quick would, you know, how quick's quick?
You pick a number.
Let's say 20 tau, we'll give you like eight minutes.
Eight minutes. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm sorry, we'll be right.
Come back. So, if you could please take your seats. Hello? Lots of open seats are available.
Thank you for my continued interest. I don't have a.
Yes, ma'am. So, thank you very much, Ms. Kinderman, and we're ready for you.
Thank you, Chair and fellow commissioners. I've prepared a presentation and kept it to 15 minutes, but I wondered if I might have a few extra minutes to address some of the items in the last discussion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It, it just, it won't be that long, I just wanted to clarify a few facts that were identified for everybody. Couple, just respond to some statements made, there will be no new materials stored on site, I think we already know there's also already a diesel tank at the location, it's already on site, there will be no storage of the asphalctic material on site, it will be removed from the site in sufficient quantities, made in sufficient. It will be removed from the site in sufficient quantities, made in sufficient quantities, and removed from the site at the end of each day as needed for whatever the project might be. So, there will be none of the hot asphalt stored on site. In the discussion, there was some jumping back and forth between the liquid asphalt and the hot mix leaving the plant. The trucks, the amount of truck trips leaving the plant will be the same. They'll just be in a different form, having, the material will just be in a different form, having been mixed with the, the hot mix and taken off-site. So, there won't be any additional truck trips as a result of the material leaving, that would be leaving the site. The only additional truck trips, which I think that Commissioner Mirtis, I'm sorry-
Lisa.
Lisa, thank you, had mentioned was, in fact, there would be 625 additional trucks annually, and that is bringing in the hot mix that ends up getting mixed up with the asphalt.
The 625 refers to which trucks?
The trucks that's bringing in the-
The liquid?
The asphalt, the liquid, yeah. The liquid asphalt. Thank you, I'm getting mixed up myself here. So, that would be 625 trucks annually to bring in that liquid asphalt. Yeah, based on a maximum production, which would be in a very robust year that hasn't happened for a long time. On the air quality emissions, the county's own expert on the plant had a very glowing report, and I understand, I wasn't present two days ago, but at both the board hearing and at this hearing, I have not, apparently at that hearing, and I have not heard at this hearing, staff providing the commission with an analysis of the glowing report on air quality and how this plant should be immediately given an ATC according to the county's own expert that was retained. So, I don't know if that information had been provided separately to the commission, but I haven't heard that discussed here at all. I have heard discussed concerns about air emissions from the plant.
Was that an outside hire, or was that-
Yes.
Yeah, that's our, that's our contract, Commissioner. No, we haven't provided that.
It's not really sort of the topic or the discussion under O-35, so, I, it wouldn't have been really appropriate. I'm sure it's great, but-
What's the question?
Well, understood, but I thought that I heard them saying the plant will also emit fumes, not just the trucks, but I did hear that mention, so I thought, since that was raised, I wanted to clarify that a very glowing report had been prepared on the particular plant. So, understood. As to the emissions in the trucks coming on-site, they are heavily regulated. We've talked about this by CARB, you've already mentioned that everything's heavily regulated. They are regulated by CARB, by the state, according to the Tier IV diesel regs that are in place right now. So, you won't be seeing fumes and puffs of, you know, diesel chugging down the road as might be envisioned by some people. Also, with regard to truck safety in general, and whether they're leaking materials as they trudge down the road or cross the bridge in the waters, whatever waters they may cross, the trucks are also all heavily regulated by the Department of Transportation that has to make sure they're all operating properly or they can't be put out on the road. So, DOT also regulates trucks to make sure they're not dribbling material out of their side tanks and all of that. And we'd also mentioned that the agencies charged with protecting the water resource, CCWD, Stockton East Water District, and the Department of Fish and Wildlife don't have any concern about this plant whatsoever. And any concerns they have have been, have been addressed. On the issue, oops, excuse me, on the issue of a diesel spill, I have a article here on a liquid asphalt spill into the Sandy River in Oregon, which says that it caused absolutely no environmental impacts, and it explains why. That, it says that it's made, the cleanup has begun, made easier because the asphalt cooled quickly once it hit the soil and water, forming a solid mass. There was no fish kill, no sheen on the water. So, there is nothing that exudes or emits from the asphalt once it would hit, solidify, and hit the ground or the water. It's just, it's inert. There may be extra copies if someone in the audience would like to see them, if they want mine. And there may be additional copies. I would ask the commission, since I am not able to communicate with staff in this forum at this, in this type of a scenario, I would ask the commission to ask staff, what condition in a conditional use permit would they even impose to deal with the issues that they've identified as being of concern? With all of the regulatory, federal, state, and local regulations, what condition would they impose, and why couldn't it just be attached to the ATC? What magical difference would ladling on a CUP make here? I still haven't heard one condition. So, I would ask you to consider asking them that question, if that's of interest to you, but it's a question that I would have. On the comment on the EPA standards, we concur that they absolutely should and can be considered, the EPA standards that the commissioner mentioned. Talked a little bit about the existing diesel tank. There would be another diesel tank, but there has been a diesel tank on the property since 1962. It's double-walled with tertiary containment, and it meets all the federal, state, and local standards, as would any new diesel tank, so it would not be an issue. And so, I just, those were some of the comments raised that I wanted to address before I got into my brief presentation. Do you have any questions on my comments? No? Okay.
The hot liquid asphalt comes in on a truck, and you're saying it's, it's not stored hot and liquid on-site?
No, there's no, once it's mixed with the rock, and I'm sorry, I didn't articulate that very well, once it is mixed with the rock, it is immediately taken off-site.
All right, that I get.
Yeah, and so, they only bring in as much of that liquid asphalt, hot liquid asphalt, as they need to mix it to make the hot rock.
And that's because-
And it's then taken off-site for the specific job that they have.
Is that also because you don't want to bother to keep the stuff hot and liquid-
Correct.
-because you have to keep heating it to keep it liquid?
Correct. Correct, which is why the equipment wouldn't be on all the time. Once, you know, in the evening, they're done with the project, it would be turned off.
A truck comes in with the hot stuff in it from the refinery?
Correct.
A pipe, a hose is connected to the mixer?
Yes, it's enclosed.
In goes the rock, in goes the liquid, they get mixed?
It's then moved-
The truck leaves empty?
Correct. No. Oh, the hot, oh, go ahead, mean the hot.
Sir, when it comes in, Commissioner, it'll be unloaded, we do have a heated tank on-site. So, it'll pump, it's all enclosed, capsulated.
So that the truck can leave?
That truck does leave.
It pumps into the tank, the tank pumps, mixes, the tanker leaves empty at the end of the day, ideally, we don't have-
The tank is also empty?
Correct.
Yes.
Right.
Thanks. Okay. All right, thank you. So, before I get into just the item, the few slides that I have here, I have two business matters just for the record. Number one, there was a question about tax base that had been raised previously. A total of $1.8 million would, revenue would be brought into the county per year in taxes. And this is based on an eight and three-quarters percent rate for 250,000 tons at $80 a ton, which is at today's rate. It could be more in the future, the tonnage could be a bit higher. So, once again, that's a total of $1.8 million per year tax base at eight and three-quarters percent for 250,000 tons at $80 a ton. Once again, the $80 is at today's rate, it could be higher in the future or less. Any questions about that? Okay. The other item for the record is that the petition signatures, there's a petition that's been circulating, they've been independently analyzed by an expert, and their conclusion is that at least 30% of the signatures are by people who do not live in the county. Another 30% or more were executed online, which is not valid under California law, and therefore, there are many fewer local signatures than that petition, valid local signatures than that petition would appear to provide to support local opinion.
30% valid?
30, well, 30% don't live in the county, and another 30% or more were executed online.
So, 30%, leaving a third valid.
And they're not valid, so 60% are not valid.
Okay. Of the valid ones, do we have any information as to what their proximity is to the location in question?
No, we do not. Would you like us to find that out?
Well-
I think it's available.
So, okay, so, so, your one-third valid includes people that are, anybody that's in the county, but they could be 20 miles away?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, on to the appeal. I'm just going to mention three things quickly. I'm going to talk, one, about the ordinance very briefly. I'm going to talk about the letter that is, is at issue, the July 2nd letter. And finally, I'm going to discuss preseason football, or why moving the goalposts is a violation of the rules. Okay? So, first item is the, the code section that we've been looking at. And I know if you've had an opportunity to read our brief, our position is, and we think it's important to make this for the record, but I'm not going to beat, beat it with a dead horse, we think that there is a specific process that needed to be followed here based on the language in the statute, and that it was not entirely followed. Even though it wasn't, whatever standard we look at, however, we feel that the project does not warrant a CUP, and I'll get to that in a moment. So, here's the code section. It just says, "The health officer reviews the plan or the list of substances to determine if there may be a significant effect on the environment associated with those substances." If there is a significant effect, then the health officer has to notify the planning director. And our position is, they never got to the is, they only got to the maybe. And they didn't make findings on the is, they only made findings on the maybe. So, could you move to the next slide? I'm not sure if this will do the, all right. So, here is how this section should be analyzed in three steps. One, the proponent provides a list of all substances to be used. Under your code, it really isn't limited to hazardous or toxic materials, but that is the way staff has applied it here. We look at hazardous or toxic materials. And so, that, that is the first step. So, we've provided our list, and if you can move to step two. All right, step two, very simply, the health officer reviews the list and determines if the type, method of use, or quantity of substances may be a significant effect on the environment. That's the second step, and that seems to be where they stopped here. Well, it might be. Therefore, as we will talk about in a moment in the July 2nd letter, maybe, and then they made their findings, but in reality, if you could kindly go to the next slide, they needed to go to step three. If the county health officer makes up finding of whether there is a significant effect, then they have to notify the planning director to require a conditional, conditional use permit. I don't want to beat this with a dead horse, like a dead horse, but they really missed a specific step here, and we think it was important for the legal record to state that, that there really was a three-step process. And the third step, they never really found, made the finding that there was a significant effect on the environment. It, only there may be a specific, a significant effect on the environment. And that, in fact, every sentence and word does matter in the statute. The is is not surplusage, and it cannot be treated as surplusage. So, it was a crucial point to make just for the record, but nonetheless, based on the July 2nd letter, which, if you could go to the next slide, by the APCD's own test set forth in this letter, whether the may finding, MAY, or the is finding is applied, the proponent meets the test, and no CUP should be required. So, here is their entire analysis of why a CUP would be required. And if it, it's a little hard to see the shading up there, but it says, "Based on the information I received from CB Asphalt on June 25th, I've determined the proposal to add the hot mixed asphalt plant will involve the use of a hazardous material that may have a significant effect on the environment, absent the imposition of mandatory conditions and requirements designed to reduce the risk associated with the use of that material." Well, there are hundreds of conditions that are already imposed on this plant that mitigate and reduce the risks of the material. The two that were mentioned here was the Cooper Program and OSHA, and we comply with that and many, many more. Therefore, by their own letter, the CUP shouldn't be required, whether you look at the may standard or the is standard. It says, "It may have a significant effect on the environment, absent the imposition of all these conditions." Well, every federal, state, and local agency has imposed those conditions, and under the law, a Civil Code section which was cited in our brief, Civil Code Section 3529, the maximum California is that the law has been obeyed. So, they can't presume that we haven't obeyed the law, they have to presume that we are obeying the law and complying with all of it. Therefore, those were their findings, whether it be the may standard or the is standard, and we are complying with them. And they need to presume that we've complied with the law. Therefore, no CUP should be required here, based on the July 2 letter and their findings, and that's the explanation for their findings. Onto my third point, preseason football, or why moving the goalposts is a violation of the rules. So, I direct you to page six of the staff report.
Uh-oh.
The very bottom. This is just an example of how the goalposts have been moved. That was the standard they said we had to comply with on July 2. Now, in a staff report, now in a presentation today, prepared last night, they've moved the goalposts again. That's what makes this unconstitutional, the way it's being applied.
Would you stop and give me that page?
Yes, I beg your pardon. It's page six, the very bottom of the staff report, where it says, "The applicable laws under the Cooper-"
You're in the last full paragraph?
Page six of, yes, well, at the bottom of it, the bottom quarter of it, after Abbott and Kinderman LLP, documents the proximity of the plant to the river. None of this was discussed up here. It was Cooper and OSHA. Now, we're talking about the river. Address assortment handling of hazardous materials, but don't address the number of trucks going in and out of the facility crossing the river. That wasn't discussed up here. They keep moving the goalposts. That's why this statute is unconstitutional as they're applying it. You can't, they should have set all this up here. That's what we're appealing. We're saying, under that, it says, "Absent imposition of mandatory conditions," there are already those mandatory conditions and scores of others that we are complying with under other federal, state, and local regimes. I think this is a little simpler, and maybe I'm making it too simple, but they're moving the goalposts, keep telling us there are new things that they need to consider, new criteria, but that isn't what they use to base that decision on, period. It's a two-and-a-half-page letter, that was it, and we comply with it. So, we, we comply with the criteria set forth in the July 2 letter. We have to comply with a host of other federal, state, and local environmental obligations. The county's own expert retained, examined the plant, concluded it should, the ATC should be issued. It exceeds all the county standards. And finally, staff can't keep changing the goal, moving those goalposts. That's why it's unconstitutional, the way they're applying it. They kind of keep back, you know, they make decisions, and then they're kind of trying to back into their rationale after the fact, but that isn't what the decision was made on. And what's in that staff report is just one example of that. I think today, the whole discussion was a good discussion, but it was moving that goalpost again. All of that should have been in that letter before that was issued, that decision, whether you look at the may standard or the is standard. And that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions?
Questions? And just, before we get going here, we're going to, you know, we're going to break at 12:30, just so that you guys know all, you know, for lunch, wherever, wherever we're at.
Thank you.
Okay.
I know you don't want to beat this horse much, because it's already dead, but-
Oh, no, you go.
But what do you do with the, with the difficulty of determining whether a plant is a significant effect on the environment before- effect on the environment before it's up and running?
I, you know enough about the plant, based on a report, as to whether or not that plant itself will have a significant impact on the environment. You have that report that will answer that question for you.
So you're saying it's possible to comply with the "is" standard before the plant is up and running?
Absolutely.
Okay.
When the plant is up and running, the purpose of that is to determine that it's operating within the parameters of the district's criteria and federal and state criteria. But you can make that decision ahead of time. There may be a big plant, under the "is" or "may" criteria, that could have a significant impact on the environment, but we don't see that here. And we've provided the staff test.
Actually, testing, true. We provided with the...
Testing was done, done earlier.
Correct.
Just as a matter of interpreting 0.035. What is the significance, under your interpretation of the step two, the may-have determination? It looks like nothing happens to it. So why is it there?
Because the "may" is the assessment. He has to look at everything and say, "All right, this may have an effect on the environment. I have to take a few steps here." Now, we recommended, if you want to move to the next slide, a strategy for doing that. We recommended maybe how other jurisdictions do it, and, you know, what is the criteria that would make sense considering? You know, it, does the substances MSDS indicate these ratings that exceed a category two? I mean, these are the types of criteria that are typically applied in determining whether something could have a significant impact. We suggested a proposed evaluation criteria that the director could have considered and could have put in their July 2 letter. It would have been some criteria that was connected to things that, you know, specific laws, whether it's EPA laws, CARB laws, SEQA laws, is it within a quarter mile of sensitive receptors? Is it, I mean, we, and if you want to go on to the next, there's just five criteria that we identified. We're just saying, this is what they could have done. They could have done something entirely different.
Finally, on the 0.35 interpretation issue, what, what is your comment about the legislative history, particularly the materials that was put up on the slide that talks about the potential hazard and potential for effect on the environment? Wouldn't that tend to support the may-have interpretation?
Well, does it have a potential? Yes, you make that assessment, but they have to make, before they say, "You must get a CUP," they have to make a final finding, saying, you know, "We think this is, there is going to be a significant impact on the environment," just like you do under a SEQA checklist. It's analogous to that. They have to make that finding. They have to make a finding whether or not they think there's a significant impact under the legislative history. So does it have a potential impact, yes or no? So is 0.35 written the best way it could have been written? No, but it is kind of clear, and we look at that. When I look at a statute like that, all those words, "under the law," okay? You're supposed to give all those words meaning. That's why we looked at it as a two-step process. But it kind of doesn't matter here. We needed to make that statement for the record. Who knows where all this could end up? We wanted to make that statement for the record, but either, whether you're looking at the "may" standard or the "is" standard, what he provided in that July 2 letter, we've complied with that and more. And then the third, you know, this slide was just, here are some alternative ways that the criteria could have been, you know, criteria that you could have used to analyze whether there really is a significant impact on the environment. So we look at it as a two-step process, just based on the language in the ordinance, because that's how the law tells you to read an ordinance. Is that what they intended? Probably, we don't know. We think the legislative intent clearly doesn't intend that every use in the M1, M2 zone, or that other zone, requires a CUP. And so, is there a bright-line test that's provided in the ordinance? No. But here's a way of creating a test. Here's a test that could have been implied.
I just wanted to say, and perhaps Mr. Moss can weigh in on this, but my read of his addition of the effect on the environment, "absent the imposition of mandatory conditions and requirements designed to reduce the risk associated with the use of the material," is more of a notification that his determination is based solely on that, and it doesn't mean that those hazards couldn't be mitigated. That's the way I read it.
I would have kind of agreed that is exactly how it was even, if not a good mitigation.
I, there, right, this, our interpretation is just different.
It's different, right.
It's just different.
Right. I'm just saying, it could be, one could interpret it that way, too.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, of course.
Could I ask you then, on, on these slides here, on number three, which is the previous slide?
Mm-hmm.
Where do you have, where did the quarter-mile factor come from?
Let me go check that, please.
Please sit for a slide show. It's on the screen now.
Oh, yeah, this was based on buffer ranges, let's see, provided under other general plan, maybe how another general plan deals with wetland riparian buffers.
Oh, our general plan?
No, other general plans might deal with these issues, not your general plan.
Is it a fact?
And, yeah, so, oh, excuse me, and so what we did was, we went beyond, like, for example, it's at page 19 of the brief, yeah. The buffers typically range from 50 to 150 feet, but here, we extended it to a quarter of a mile, just to be ultra-conservative.
Okay, I guess it depends on what you're buffering from, right?
Correct.
All right. On number four, same question with respect to 300.
Oh, that similarly is based on 150 to 150 feet, and then something beyond that.
Okay. I'm not sure I got my head around the moving of the goalpost point that you're making, and I'm, I want to make sure I understand that better, which is...
So what I'm saying is that in the staff report, and even today in the presentation, there's a whole host of rationale, you know what findings are all about when you're dealing with a finding for a decision? You know, you're supposed to provide your rationale for it. Well, that rationale wasn't part of the July 2 letter, but it's now woven into a staff report, "Oh, by the way, this is what we were thinking back on July 2." And by the way, what they said today, "This is what we were thinking back on July 2 when we made this finding." But it doesn't say that in the letter to us, telling us, "We have to go get a CUP." It says, "You've got to comply with these two things, and absent these, you know, mandatory conditions, this is going to have a significant effect on the environment." Well, gosh, we're complying with those and more. That was the rationale provided, as a part of, for the finding. But in the staff report, we have new rationale, and today, there's more added on. Some of it the same, some more. That's why I'm saying they keep moving the criteria, the goalposts.
Okay. Let me see if I can boil it down kind of accurately, or as accurate as I can. You've come up with a three-step process. Isn't the essence of your position that there should not be an absent factor in the analysis? The analysis should not be absent various conditions and regulations and other criteria factor. You gave examples of what might have been considered.
Right. I think it probably should have just said, "We think that the CUP is required for these following 10 reasons." Not, you know, absent compliance with all these other things, you don't really need it. It was just, it was not written in a way that is a really great finding.
Okay.
It's a clear finding.
Okay, so the one issue is, there shouldn't have been, the analysis, the findings should not have been absent these various factors, absent a criteria, and absent regulatory factors?
I would have left, they could have been left out, yes, to make it clearer. And then they could have added, "All these reasons, you're driving over a river, you're doing this, you're, there's diesel fumes, there's these fumes," all the things they've talked about today. That's what would have been in the findings, to justify why a CUP is required.
Well, finally, I mean, I meant conclusion. You're saying the conclusion should not have been formulated absent the various mitigating factors of the regulatory entities that you have to comply with?
Right. Yes, they should have considered, though, in general, all of the regulations.
Okay, so that's, that's one issue. The other is that the "is" factor, and picking up on the question that Mr. Rooster asked, was that you can, you can calculate, maybe "calculate" is the wrong word, but you can assess the end result, because this kind of plant operation is a known factor.
Absolutely.
If you're not, you're not doing something that's never been done before.
Correct. Correct.
And there are some 3,600 of these things around the country.
Correct.
So if one doesn't know about such an operation, it's not hard to find out. The, the change, not change, but the difference between an older batch plant and a drum mix facility, the drum mix, which is the type we're talking about here?
Correct.
Is a newer system.
Sir, could you please state your name for the record, too, since you're standing there?
John Simmons, CB Asphalt.
Thank you.
Is a newer type of operation?
Yes and no. There's also late-model, current-production batch plants as well. But the drum plant, this one is pretty much state-of-the-art, yes.
It's a different generation of system than, than an updated batch plant?
Correct.
Okay. What's the net difference, as far as the environment is concerned, on the use of that kind of a machine versus the other previous generation or updated version of a previous generation?
Commissioner, I can, I can summarize a little bit. I can't give specifics, but...
I'm not going to be able to understand your specific intent.
Effectively, it's cleaner, more efficient.
Quieter.
Quieter.
Less smell.
Progressively, like most anything, I think, in today's world, with the later models, everything's refined, improved, given all the concerns, be it environment, health, et cetera. Operational costs, pardon me, and the, and the system, well, yes.
Enclosed.
Enclosed systems, baghouse, the computer-operated monitoring systems. There's several hundred different systems being monitored continuously when the plant runs. If something starts to go out, if, if the diesel burner isn't burning efficiently as it's programmed and should and calibrated, we get alarm systems go off. Sometimes they'll shut the plant down. It won't allow us to do a lot of the things that could have been done with the older plants, batch plants, that you pull the lever and you wait until the rock hits a weight, and then you add the oil. It's, it's state-of-the-art, if that, I'm not sure if that...
Yeah, yeah, I think that's a fair summary. I mean, I'll take your word for it that it's more modern. I just wanted to know whether it was higher output, and therefore, the output more than makes up for its greater efficiency, or its, you know, its cleaner operation, but the output is so much greater that it cancels out?
No, sir, this is probably a mid-sized plant. There's much bigger plants, as well as smaller. This is, this is a mid-sized plant.
Okay. Thank you.
In, in your report, you talk about workers are at a level two. I think the biggest concern through reading comments that I've received from the public isn't the workers. They choose to be in that environment. The people that live around it are more concerned about possibility of the transport of the hazardous materials. And you were referencing earlier the trucks and the safety standards on the trucks?
Right. Through the Department of Transportation inspects all the trucks on a regular basis before they're able to transport material.
Have there been any accidents with that chemical in it that you are aware of?
No. And there have been no accidents at the plant, at the quarry either. It's transported diesel across the river.
And then you talk about the stuff substance?
Well, the, at this location, but you're talking Calvora's County. Yes, I did hand them one in Oregon.
Okay, that's what I want to know. I want to know what the cleanup process, because you presented us with the process of an asphalt truck spilling, but not the bit, I mean, that would be a bigger concern for the neighbors and the neighbors.
Oh, it still solidifies. It solidifies the same. So just as the, the material coming in, the hot, the hot material coming in, the hot oil asphalt coming in, will solidify as well at ambient temperatures, in addition to the material going off-site. Commissioner Aliread, you can attest to that, I'm sure, as well.
This was the liquid version.
Right.
Okay. So I think, you know, just from reading my public comments, I think that's probably where some misunderstanding is coming in, because you're actually saying, "The hazardous material that's being transported in the hot liquid form has," and that's what your report that you just handed us about?
Correct.
That was referencing that particular hazard material?
Correct. Right. What comes in is the pavement-grade asphalctic cement. That's like what we're calling the oil or the hot, that's, and then what goes out is the hot-mixed asphaltic concrete. They're both going to solidify when they hit ambient temperatures.
Okay.
Both. What's coming in and what's going out. It will just sit in a lump. It isn't going to run to any water source. I mean, if it fell in the, in the river, if the truck overturned for some reason there, it would do exactly what it shows in that newspaper article, what happened in Oregon, in the Sand River. That's what it would do. If something unusual, there was an earthquake or something, and all of a sudden some spilled, it would sit in a lump right there. It wouldn't trans, go to anybody's house or down to the river. It would just sit in a lump.
Okay.
Once it hits ambient temperatures. Is there anything you want to finish?
Well, I think, to give you an idea, if you're speaking more specifics with the hot liquid asphalt?
Yes.
If a tanker were to spill, there will be some flow, yes. It probably, it comes out, most of the time it's loaded, the refinery around 350, 400 degrees Fahrenheit, and it holds its temperature for quite a while inside the insulated double-walled tankers for transit. Once it gets to the site, the same thing. If it was to tip over, it would, at first, it would have some flow, yes. That is a fact. It cools extremely fast. To what degree depends, how deep is it setting, how, you know, how fast is the truck going? But I would say it comes out of a consistency, probably warm honey initially. If it was to dump into a river, it would turn into hard bubble gum almost immediately.
Okay.
That's a fact.
Which is what that article talks about.
Okay.
But it's not close to any sensitive receptor, other than the river, that it would flow to, someone's house or other drinking water source.
In the Oregon incident, how difficult was the cleanup, and was there damage left behind with that?
There was no environmental damage, and the cleanup was easy.
Okay.
They just had to pick up the lumps.
And that reaffirms, too, I think, we've talked before...
That was recent, in 2015.
Okay.
Where it is also used to line fish hatcheries. Some of the other folks did some homework and found that. It's lining canals. When it becomes cold and solid, it's inert.
It doesn't leach any substance into the water, as it didn't recently in the Oregon scenario, in the Sandy River.
No different than the road on Silver Rapids is paved up. It sets right along and above the river. When it rains, that water goes right off the road and ends up in the river. Doesn't hurt a thing.
Okay.
Which is why the Department of Fish and Wildlife, CCWD, and Stockton East Water District are not concerned about that.
Okay, and then you talk about the EPA says it's not on the extremely hazardous substance list?
Correct.
Is it on a high substance list? What type of list is it on?
I have to check that, excuse me. I think it's not, I don't know the answer to that. I don't think it's on a hazardous substances list at all, but I don't have that in the brief here. I don't recall. Perhaps the AP, the Environmental Health Department may know that.
Perhaps. Okay, I think that was all my questions. I think that was all my questions.
Other questions with Ms. Kinderman right now?
Well, just one. The hot mix that's on the trucks when they leave the plant?
Correct.
Isn't that mostly solid?
No.
When it leaves the plant?
No, it's still...
On average, sir, yes, it's 95% solid, that's the aggregate. On average, I think it's safe to say, the liquid is 5%, and the aggregates, the hot aggregates, are 95%, as a rule of thumb.
So if you dump it, it's not going to go anywhere?
Well, that's the honey, right?
No, no, the hot liquid asphalt.
Oh, the hot liquid, okay.
You're speaking in terms of the hot mix.
Yes, it leaves the plant after it's mixed up.
Correct. It's mixed and headed out to be paved. It's 5% roughly of the liquid, and 95% of the hot mix. It would probably, if it was a load of gravel, a load of gravel will spill and travel farther than the hot mix asphalt.
Because it tends to clump together.
It's sticky, you betcha. It's, the binder, it's got the glue in it.
I visualize chocolate chip cookie dough, unbaked. It's chocolate chip cookie dough.
Now, now.
The chocolate chips or the rock, the hot mix.
I think we've got it. We're all hungry now, so I think, just like, that's not a good analogy right now.
Bad timing.
I've been using that analogy from day one with them. I go, "The rocks are the chocolate chips."
Any other questions?
Yeah, one more.
Okay.
With respect to the moving the goalposts point that you made, isn't it fair to say that what they're doing now is giving the commission and the public a much more full explanation of the facts and the reasoning behind their decision than they are moving the standards? And second part of the question, is there any, any law that says they can't do that in this proceeding?
Well, good question. And I still think that when you, that when findings are written, that rationale for the findings must be made in order for those findings to be valid, when you look at, whether you're looking at MAP Act findings, or any type of findings that have to be prepared for a board or commission to approve. The rationale must be there, or it is an illegal finding.
I just want to make, I'm sorry, one clarification of that.
Feel free.
Because I think there's a little bit of a confusion between a determination made by staff and the findings that the, and I think that Ms. Kinderman would agree, that the findings that the board, that the planning commission's being asked to make at the end of this hearing is not just Mr. Moss's determination, there's a resolution with proposed findings that are going to be more detailed.
Correct. But this, correct, but I still look at this as a finding, as he is the head of an agency making a land use determination about whether or not a conditional use permit is required, and that they are responsible to include the findings, what their rationale was at that time. How do we know what to appeal from? We're appealing from a very thin July 2 letter. That's what we're appealing from. If I were to start making up things that weren't in there, Julie would be the first to tell me, "I can't do that." So why is it okay for them to make up rationale after the fact, if I can't make up arguments that weren't in there? How can I debate it or challenge it if I haven't been told the reason for those findings? So do I know the exact law? I can't quote the Government Code Section to you, but I do know that they, they have to let us know, give us the appropriate notice as to what the rationale is for their decision or their determination. And that wasn't, I can't challenge what's in the staff report, I can only challenge what's given to me in a letter that says, "You now must do a use permit because there may be a significant impact, and this is why, absent all of this." So I am constrained to that. And that did not include all these other examples, some which we heard today, and one of which I pointed out in the staff report.
Could you have just issued a decision that said, "I find that the type, quantity, and or method of use may have a significant effect on the environment," period? Your friend Brian, would that have been a legal decision?
It would, and then we would have had to go out in a million directions trying to understand what it was based on, but it would have been, I would have challenged it for not providing us any rationale.
But would you have won?
Of course. Of course.
Anything else right now? I'm sure we'll be talking with Ms. Kinderman later, but, so why don't we take our lunch break, and we'll reconvene at 1:30, and we'll ask for public testimony.